All right, I'm gonna call the meeting to order then. North of School Board Meeting, October 18th, 2018. We will start with our roll call. Keith McGurgen here. Shane Wells is absent. He said he wasn't gonna be able to make it tonight. Amy Hanneman.
Here.
Brian Winslow.
Here.
Dave Ruth.
Here.
And we'll go around the panel, start from that side.
Adrian Allford, Assistant Principal.
Jocelyn Young, Principal.
I was all Business Administrator.
Brianna Jackson, Student Rep for Co-Brown.
Scott Ruining, Superintendent.
All right, thank you, everyone. So our first thing we do is a Pledge of Allegiance. So we're wondering if you would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance today?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic, which stands on the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, bills and manifests are going around?
Here.
Okay. Yeah, we'll start off with our.
We have good news. We have a student representative from Co-Brown. And this is Brianna Jackson. And.
No, junior.
She's a junior now. Brianna, in the past, served as our student representative on the Strategic Planning Committee, and spent a lot of time with the board and the other community members. And we're certainly excited to have her here. And she's gonna share some information on Co-Brown. And then I said after she's done with that, if there's any questions, we can ask them. And then we're gonna let her go get on with her student life.
Okay, so I have these. And they have information about Co-Brown. So I'll wait until I.
Yep.
Okay, so the first paper that is inside is basically like an overview of like the things that we offer at Co-Brown. So one of the things that is on here is the clubs and athletics that we have. These are either ones that we have currently or that we have had in the past. And on the side, there are some like facts about Co-Brown. When it was established, testing scores, student-teacher ratio, like how many advanced placement courses we have, average class sizes. Those are just some of the things that you can find on there. And then we have this gray sheet of paper. And it has some questions that usually get asked about Co-Brown. There are graduation requirements, the levels of courses that are offered, homework, attendance, and behavior policies, the grading system, calendar, and rotating modified block schedule, and freshman orientation day. So like stuff like the lunch program. A lot of information about those, which are important to the students mostly. The registration process is the pink sheet of paper. So it has some dates on it that would be important for like parents of eighth graders and the eighth graders themselves. And then there's another sheet of paper that talks about what kind of classes or electives are offered. This is for freshmen. This is not for everyone in the school. So this would be for incoming freshmen. And then there is some public activities listed on here, which the silent auction is new. And the Harlem Rockets and the Winter Arts Festival we have every year, I believe, as well as the basketball game for the alumni. And then this little booklet right here is just some things about Co-Brown. It's history, about the students', academic experiences, student support, which is very important, I find. And athletics, co-curriculars. There's a wide range of things that Co-Brown offers in here.
Great, good.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for Brianna?
Is this your first year?
I'm a junior.
Junior, okay.
So do you mind if I ask some questions?
Of course.
So these questions are for you. So what ideas might the board have? Because Brianna will be with you hopefully once a month or roughly. What idea? How about this? If the board members outside of the meeting could think about some things they'd like to learn about Co-Brown and email them to me, then I can email them to Brianna Headmaster. And then she'll have an idea of what you'd like to hear about. Does that sound like a good idea?
It does.
All right, so that's really, it wasn't a question, was it? But I tried.
I can answer like any questions if you want. I can like talk to some students at the school and figure out their thoughts on any of them.
Great.
Perfect.
All right.
Thanks so much for coming.
So thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
It was nice to see you again.
Yeah, we do have some agenda adjustments for tonight. We're gonna try to front-load it for our panel and our staff members here so they can get out of here, so we don't keep them all night. So I think the plan is to, with your approval, to move forward with the principal's report.
We can review, we can quickly review the budget. That shouldn't take too long. And the principal's report. And then if it is okay with the board, we'll have Mr. O'Sullivan, Mr. Allford, and Ms. Young leave and rest.
Sounds like there's some sickness going through here. Does that work for everybody? Do that?
Sounds good.
Okay. We'll also take this non-public session for the legal opinion. We can do that at the end of the meeting.
Yep.
Shouldn't be a problem.
Yep.
Maybe opening public comment, though, we can do that first. I expect they won't be able to. All right, any board member wanna take this opportunity to do opening, open public comment? No, okay.
No.
I'm glad we did not move that. All right, so we'll move on immediately to the budget first.
So it just passed out hot off the presses after many revisits and adjustments over the last week and a half, Ms. Young. Is the first glance of your school budget. I think you probably need some time to review this. I might walk through page by page and point out some things for you to be aware of. Would that be all right?
Please do.
All right. The first thing is, if we go down to halfway down page two, health insurance. I mean, page one, I'm sorry. Halfway down page one. Whenever you see a health insurance line in this budget, you're gonna see a note that talks about the GMR, the Guaranteed Maximum Rate. So for the newer board members, the GMR has come in. And that's what they've said, your rate will be no more than this. Okay, so we use that number to budget with initially with the understanding that it can't go any higher than that. But in the history of this board, in the past five years, you've seen those numbers come in lower than that 8.7. Okay? If we go on to page.
So can I ask you a question?
Sure, just jump right in.
The first, the very first line.
Yep.
And the notice says a projected retirement sick buyout of 55 days. Do we have one of those, two of those?
You have four.
We have four, and they're all gonna hit this year? Or?
If you look at the notes, 27 teachers and nine additional positions elsewhere. Project to track four teachers' final retirement package at the final 20%.
Okay, yep.
All right.
And the, okay.
Yep. Okay, so that's from your incentive package from five years ago. Is that correct? I believe it is.
20%.
Yes.
Yeah.
What?
I wasn't here, so.
Well, 20% would tell me it was five years, because five times two is 100%. So that's what that number is.
Yep, gotcha.
Okay?
Yep.
You know, while we're on the first page, teacher aid wages. If you'd had some replacements or the buyouts, that's why the buybacks, see the CBA buyback, that's why that's up 2%. Really, you're in negotiations. So if there wasn't that sick time buyout there, that would be 0% right now because you're, the results of your negotiations are gonna go on more in article. Any questions about page one? Page two, well, you'll see a note on the top of page two. Your retirement rate for teachers increased a little bit. And that percentage has been calculated on the previous page.
That's our requirement per state.
That's your contribution. Yep, that's your requirement.
Wow.
I thought it was, I thought it was 11.17. Is that an increase from that?
That is, that's support.
Okay, so they have different numbers?
I think. No, they definitely have different numbers. But we'll have to look later in the budget to see the number.
Yep.
That has really risen over the last five years.
It hasn't really risen much this year. It was pretty, it was a minor increase this year.
I guess I'm going back to when it was about 7%.
It has gone up because of the shortage in the pension.
Yeah.
The state has mandated that everyone's paying more to cover that.
Shortage in the pension is calculated by the state or.
Correct.
Or as you would read, it was screwed up by the state. But anyway, we gotta pay it.
And I remember, and this is a guess, but I remember where it was. I think the increases started in 2007, when they started to rise. Unemployment compensation and workers' compensation. Those are just estimates right now because we don't have the actual numbers yet.
Thank you.
Any more questions on page two?
I have too many questions yet. I just got.
Right, right. I'm just giving you a glancing blow. Page three, again, these are supplies and equipment. You'll have questions about that. But you probably won't have questions tonight. If you do have questions on page three, let me know. Hearing none, we'll go on to page four. Page four, I wanna point out that there's been some line changes because your charts of accounts needed to be upgraded. I think I've talked about that at the SAU level. We're supposed to be using uniform codes. And when you were set up, those uniform codes weren't necessarily used. For instance, in one of my districts, I don't know if it's this, our tuition line was actually code, was, the description of our tuition line for special ed that we were using was actually for residential placements, and we have no residential placements. So you'll see some lines with dollars in them or lines with zeros, and then a duplicate line below that uses the correct code. Okay.
Can I add a little bit to that?
Sure.
We're doing this, you'll see it says ESY Elementary, and it's all zeros, and then you see 26640. About two-thirds of the way down the page, 01, 1251, 2800. And just above that, to Mr. Ruining's point, says the same number with the 202. So that's gonna be the overall budget that we're working on. And then jump down to the second to last line, says ESY Elementary Employee. That's actually going to be, because the state insists upon it, where we're gonna track the actual details. And you're gonna see interspersed through this, ESY, you could say supplies, you could say something. But by lumping it all into one line, we have not really been able to give the state the accurate detail level that they're insisting. And we're hoping if we change this new software that we're going to take the data automatically out of this report and feed it into this report that the state wants. Because if you recall, we had a big cash error, for instance. And by actually taking the report and feeding it into the proper cells in the Excel spreadsheet, it eliminates that kind of stuff. So that's the reason. So I hate to belabor the point, but.
Right, and just to point out to Bob's point, we're trying now, like for those ESY lines, because you're saying you're gonna see them interspersed, we're trying to get those grouped into one center so it's clearer. We're struggling to do that with ADS. But hopefully, what you'll see when we're done is that 26,640 at the top of the cost center, and then billable lines underneath that would just have a dollar in them so we can move that money when we spend it. Because we, ESY is one of those things you project out. And so we don't know exactly what our salaries and our supplies are gonna be and our FICA. But if we have those sub-lines underneath, we'll be able to plug those numbers in and then feed it to the state.
The state insists that a line, if you're gonna put anything in a line, it has to have a dollar in. If it had a zero.
You have one dollar, right?
Yeah, one dollar. And it just pulls the line up. If you had a zero, first of all, it's not gonna show up here. And secondly, we can't use it, even if you wanted to use it.
So, and I know Mr. Ruth knows all about the dollars in the lines.
Adds up to $78 when you add up all those ones, I'm telling you.
So why, like for the special ed substitute wages, do we not have the dollar there? Has that just moved somewhere else altogether?
That line didn't be closed out?
Where, where are you?
I'm sorry, about halfway through page four, line 01, 1251, 20020.
There's $20,000 in there.
I'm sorry.
It's just because we had an increase or decrease.
Sorry, I was gonna throw in one.
Right.
Gotcha. Never mind, me.
Any more questions on page four? Page five, again, you're just continuing the special education lines here. You'll see ups and downs based, did you find the typo?
Yep, no, I found my 11.17.
Oh, you found your 11.17.
Yeah.
So the retirement rate for non-certified employees is 11.17, is your required contribution. And again, you'll see like ESY Elementary Purchased with a dollar in it. That's what I just went over. And then Mr. Byrne applied a 5% assumption on this year's numbers. And if those numbers come in, we'll be able to adjust up or down. Mr. Ruth, do you have a question?
You didn't get to it yet, but halfway down, I have a question.
What is it?
Well, you just talked about getting ESYs and trying to group them together. I would say the same thing about the NECC programs. We'll see on one page a cost and then on another page a cost.
If we, if we, if we can do that, we can do that.
What we can do is generate some sub-reports. That's actually the way to get at some of this. Because from an accounting standpoint, if you'll notice, 01, 1200, and then it goes 5,400, 5,500, 5,563, it comes down sequentially. That's just the way the accounting system is designed to work. And the state has designed that system. But if you want to see everything easily sub-grouped, we can just create a little specialty report that says, here you go, everything's in it. It says you wanna see it.
And then what I did notice, Mr. O'Sullivan, is we have different lines but the same title, so.
No, it has been instructed to modify those lines so that they actually describe what purchased is. But there are three categories of purchased that the state has.
All right.
Another thing I always complain about is like preschool. That should be on a separate page by itself with the, because that's really not a cost.
We have a separate report for that if you ever wanna see it.
It's hard to, it's hard with this software to regroup. So we can only do the best we can do.
Yep.
I will, since you're on the preschool line, that is your unconfirmed number for next year. The Joint Board hasn't approved that budget yet. But that is, if your budget is approved as it's going to be presented Monday night, that will be your preschool number.
So that's not, okay, so we have a separate line for preschool in the SAU?
Oh, yeah.
Or is that just specialized preschool?
No, that's your preschool cost. That's your share for next year if it's approved.
Yep.
So that number could change. But we put it in there because we're, we know what it is now.
Yep. Gotcha, okay.
Any more questions on page five?
I'm sorry, the special education tuition for NECC, that 5% increase, is that a projected or is that?
That's, yeah, it's just.
It's just the ballpark right now.
We always put a 5% assumption, and usually we come in pretty close.
Don't let them know that that's a presumption.
It really doesn't.
Many ideas.
It doesn't necessarily work that way, so it's a state set. And then page six, again, just continues the special education section with notes. Any questions on page six? Okay, on to page seven. Co-curriculars, your science camp stipends and club stipends and other activities in there. And then onto the athletic section, not a lot of changes there. Any questions on page seven?
Just science camp, and it's still, we pay, and then the children or the parents are raised, and still they're half? Is that how?
It's not about, it's not half, but it's the balance, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Any questions on page seven? Onto page eight. Short officer, no changes there. And then onto your guidance section. The one change you'll see in the guidance section is guidance software. See the $440.22. Previously, you're, you have two pieces of software that has to, one has to do with special education. That's called Casey, and that's in your special education section. And then there's another software called Acuity, which has to do with Section 504. Previously, for years, that was all lumped into the special education section. It really should be broken out. The reason that it's in guidance is that where your, that's where your 50, one of your guidance councils is your 504 coordinator. So we've removed that from where it didn't belong and put it where it belongs. Any questions on page eight? Onto page nine, finishes that section, and then goes on to the nursing section. The reason you see a decrease in the nurse's salary is you've had a new nurse this year at a lower rate. Any questions on page nine? Hearing done. Page 10, contracted services for English speakers of other languages. That's based on what's called the WIDA assessment that's given by Stratford Learning Center to your other speakers. And then that comes up with a service hour requirement, and then we calculate that. For next year, right now, in this school, you do not have any children that require that service, so we haven't budgeted it.
Should we put a $1 in there, though, if somebody shows up?
Yep.
We can.
I will.
That's a good idea. Then we go on to 30% of your speech pathologists. For the new board members, when I arrived six years ago, your speech passed through a lot more than just special education. So we assigned 70% of that to special education and 30% to general education so they can work in the lower grades on communication, just so you know. And that's that section right here. Has to do with that, except, nope, that's correct. And then your contracted speech services below. A number of years ago, the SAU created some district positions. Had to do with flexibility. You know, Stratford, for instance, OT. They share, the OTs paid out of the SAU, and Stratford shares a portion, the preschool shares a portion. Your speech path is actually here full-time, so you're assigned that contracted service. But in the future, if that needs to be modified, that allows us to do that with that one position, and then also with your occupational therapist.
They're saying that our onsite.
You've got two. You've got an SAU speech path who's here all the time. And then you have your district speech path.
But it's built through the SAU.
It's built through the SAU as a contracted service. So when, like for instance, we're doing those bills right now for this year's budget, this, this, this week. So that isn't the salary? I don't want people to walk away thinking that's the salary. That's salary in the total.
Yep. Okay. So we'll see the breakdown in the SAU budget Monday night then for that.
No, actually, they're bill backs. So they don't show up in the SAU budget. So it's an enterprise account situation. So the OT for, you have one OT, two OTs, one coda, one speech.
Through all through one organization.
Our bill back. So the money comes out of the SAU, but then it's billed back to the district. So it's budget NECC, it's budget neutral. So you don't see those positions. However, when we budget the increases in the SAU, and you approve the increases for the staff other than myself, they get that salary increase. So if the SAU.
I guess I don't see why it doesn't show up as revenue and this on at the SAU level. It seems like you would see.
And I can only speak to, this is how it's been forever. And not saying that we can't change that in the future, but I don't wanna change too much. We've changed a lot over the last six years, and I don't know if.
That'd be a discussion for the Joint Board anyway, not for here, so.
Right, right.
Okay, thanks.
Any questions on page 10? Page 11, the carryover for your notes, the line increase from the previous page. That closes out your professional development section. And on to your curriculum director.
Just, no, no, just another point. I see total curriculum director. It's right there on the bottom of this page. And as I've watched going through the last eight pages, we always end up with something that should be here, like this one, but it's always at the top. Is that something that can be corrected? In other words.
Well, the total curriculum director causes at the bottom of the cost.
Right, you have curriculum director, and I see everything. And then at the very bottom says total curriculum director. If you go back, you'll find that some accounts go to the bottom. And then at the very top of the next page is like the final line.
You mean pagination?
Yeah, I mean, just, you're looking at it, and you say, how much does it cost you? And then you gotta go to the next.
You gotta look back.
I don't know if there's a way to correct somehow.
I don't know.
Okay, you don't have that time.
It's clues, Dave.
All right.
And if you could, we'd be burning a lot more paper, too, is the problem. Because like each page would be blank space.
To support Keith's, things that bug me. All right, go ahead, no problem. To support Keith's point, let me give you an operational point. So we remove one line. I go through the budget, so I've been through this budget how many times now? Quite a few, right? So when we remove a line, it throws the pages off. So now when I'm comparing the changes.
It's all different.
It's all different, so.
We're not just torturing you.
We're not doing it on purpose.
Well, with the new program, we may spend a lot of money on. Maybe that'll help that.
Maybe it will. Any more, any questions on page 11?
I'm sorry.
Yeah?
Yep. And you might have, I might have looked over this at something else. But we, curriculum director, this represents a 3% raise, that has.
That's a marker.
That's a marker. But I thought at one time we had that all on the one line. Like we have five or six people in this building. We never put it, we used to put one line in the principals that said.
You used to have a salary ensuing year line? It caused so much confusion that it was broken out to apply to each line as a marker, and then you determined that you do your budget, what you do.
So the note says 3% raise, but the percentage change is 1.5%?
I have to look into that. I was looking at that myself.
I have to look into that, I was looking at that myself.
We'll take a look.
Just don't want to set a precedent that, okay, you guys, that was my question, all right.
So as your budget development goes on, I'm going to pull you into a non-public session to discuss. And then usually, like you approve what the percentage is and then Jocelyn, through the evaluation process, awards those as she sees fit with me, correct? Is that how we do it?
Yep.
I make a recommendation.
Yep.
Yep. Onto page 12. Not a lot of changes in your instructional training budget. And then on to library, again, you have somebody in a new position, so you show savings there. Any questions on page 12? Finishing the cost section, library, you can see you've had a significant savings in your library. I did check lines that had zeros or smaller amounts and then Jocelyn verified that those were the requests. Chaperones is a new line, has to do with the DC trip and the overnight stipends. Why that's in the tech, all right, we're gonna move that. So, Mr. O'Sullivan, we need to move the chaperone lines to co-curriculars, Jocelyn?
Yep. Sciences would be great.
Excuse me?
Whoever the sciences, I think, would make sense.
If we're science camp, but I think that's co-curricular.
We'll move that, all right. So let's just skip that line for now and understand it's gonna be previous in the budget. Next is your technology section. Again, there's your 3% marker, there's your 8.7 GMR. And any adjustments from there? And the notes are pretty detailed in this section for you to review and ask questions. Page 14, a continuation of the notes.
Our bias this year has been to give you as much explanation to reason that, and I don't think you're gonna even have to even think about a default budget, but the state has a new rule that says, if you do have a default budget, we have to already have explained to the voters at the deliberative session and at the voting booth, line by line, lines that are going up and down and why, and which ones stay in the default budget and which ones cannot be in the default budget.
So we'll go through that, and they will have, they are the, Mr. O'Sullivan, they are the other SB2 tents, they will have a default. I think the issue is
Right.
I'm not gonna go to the last page and I applaud the board for not going to the last page, the other board, another board went right to the last page. Your default number could be a little different this year, based on your savings that you have at the end. Any more questions on page 14?
Yes.
Yep?
On the computer software, the bottom one, Freckle, what the heck is that, 6,000 bucks?
Freckle is an online platform that provides personalized practice for reading, math, science, and social studies. And this, I believe, represents a subscription for every student K through three.
We're gonna remove some freckles from kids. Want to allocate that money quickly.
Any questions on page 14?
Yeah, I guess, we in line with the, again, I'm sorry, the computer replacements and new stuff for the kids and everything, we're all in line with the
With the type plan, I think.
Three to five year plan, okay.
I think that's true.
If you turn the page to frustrate Mr. You.
Yep, there it is, right up top.
Then on to school board, this remains largely the same. I did reduce your attorney and negotiator to $20,000. If you'd like to increase that, that's fine, but it seemed that we'll have one negotiation next year. And I think that's more than enough to cover it. And the analysis that I just had done of another contract, the bill came in at about $2,000, so I think, it's in your bills tonight, I believe, so if somebody wants to look up that number.
Can I make one more comment on that?
You may.
On the 20, and any line that we reduce, again, with this new state law about default budgeting, we cannot add the number back to the default budget. In other words, the default budget, even though you had 27 last year, you're gonna have 20, because the state is bound to determine where reductions have been made. If the town goes toward default budget, the default budget will not be higher than the budget that they had rejected.
And that's based on our final, right now, we may put 7,000 in, but it's not based on that yet, not to our final.
No, this is not even close to being final, this is your
You haven't finalized it, yeah. Any more questions on page 15?
I do have one question, I don't know if it's on 15 or 16, but, you know, throughout the year, we do a few events for the staff and we put money in. What line does that come out of and should we budget for that, like for the lunch and
It comes out of school board expenses.
Those are school board expenses.
So you have 1,500 in there for, so right now, there's 13,300 for next year. That includes the 10,000 for Niasq, 1,800 for the visit, 1,800 for the Niasq dues, so you have 1,500 for whatever your expenses are.
That's generally
Okay, all right, thanks.
Where is the, the town annual report? We pay half of that, I believe, is that, it probably, it used to be almost 3,000 and then went down to about 1,500.
It's under printing.
It's under printing, last year was 462.
Okay, then please make a note that that's what that is for, because I don't think people understand that we pay for half of that town one.
For one half of town report printing.
And under the voting one, we paid, we paid 58 cents for pins one time. We got a bill for
I have to know, I have to know. Give me a line number, please.
Yeah, it's 0120, 2310-5550-000.
I've got that.
That's the printing.
Right, that's the one you're talking about, right?
Oh, I thought Dave was talking about a different
The printing is, is just for the town report.
Where's the voting line that you're talking?
I was making a joke, there is a voting line we have to pay for the voting expenses.
Advertising, printing, travel, turning.
I think any voting stuff
Next page, isn't it?
School board expenses, maybe, election day expenses.
Election day expenses. Yeah, I said, make sure we get the 58 cents in there, we had to pay for the pins.
So with, so with the reductions and increase, a lot to do with Niasq. You end up with a $3,000 increase in the cost. The SAU number, again, is not a confirmed, a confirmed number, however, with the SAU budget we have right now, that would be your number for next year. We'll adjust that as needed.
Question? Oh, I didn't get, okay, all right. Again, that's another expense that I think should be split up between this school and the high school. I used to guess it was 70, 30, 70 this school, 30, but I think it's more like 60, 40. In other words, out of, out of $350,000, this school is getting billed for all of it and I think that we should split it up. And just as in a, could be two thirds and one third, I may just come up with a figure.
Talking the SAU 44 allocation.
Yep, well, I think, yeah, it's not gonna change the final number at all, I think.
No, it doesn't change the final number.
Mr. Ruth was talking about, it's just, it's just because
We're talking about putting costs on certain lines.
Right, because this gets totaled into total elementary expenses.
I understand, but it's also, I'll do whatever you want at the end of the day.
Well, the system will do it.
Right. I think maybe that's something we should wait for the next, for the new software, see what we can do with that.
Well, if it's approved, so.
Right, right.
Yeah, but we won't have the
Regardless
The new system won't be here till the following year.
No, the new system
It would be, if you vote for it in the next month, then we would be implementing it in the spring and it would go live July 1st.
Which is what I'm saying, so it won't be here for next, for this.
It will not be here for this, and even if, I always make this caveat, because even if we don't approve a new system, we still need to straighten out these lines.
I mean, if you want, that's, that's as simple as adding a 001 to the end of SAU expense and saying it's high school, but, you know, moving it to the high school line, that's no big deal.
Right, well, that's my opinion, I would like to see that and then, like, like I mentioned, the preschool. So already, I'm coming close to taking $500,000. We're paying it, I understand that, but we'd take, no, maybe that was a little high now, but it's maybe four. But we're taking that out of this elementary budget, where we have a fight all the time with the rest of the people in town.
We can take a look at doing that, I just can't guarantee that we can do that.
Okay.
Down to your principal lines, there's a good description in there based on negotiations last year. Also, I need to remind the board that when we're budgeting, we need to meet and talk about your two administrators and what their increases should be and make that adjustments that way, just a reminder. So while, I just want to be clear, because I had the calculator out today. Mr. O'Sullivan has nicknamed my office the counting house, because the calculator's out. That looks like a 15 and a 3.5, but it's because of the vacation bias and of course reimbursement, that that's so high. Actually, when you factor those out, it's 3%, okay? Any questions on page 16?
I'm just wondering, of course, reimbursement should be in separate line, but
We can do that if that's what you want.
I think we need to check the contract and how we worded it in the negotiations, because if it's to be counted as salary, that's where it needs to be. So we'd have to verify that off the agreement that was negotiated.
It's a salary that has
I can bring, you know what I can do, is I can bring
Linda Osborne is doing all these, so she's pretty on top of what the contracts stipulate.
Well, what I can do is in your next packet, I can bring the two contracts.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, if it's, if it's, that's fine, if it's
No, we can check it together, I had them on my desk today, because actually, that's how I opened the counting house with the, everything is comparing it, so it's no big deal, but
My office is called, I'd cratch its office.
Right, and then mine's the counting house, which is ugly. Any more questions on page 16?
Oh, sorry. Yes, sorry, dental insurance?
No increase this year.
Is that?
That's what we've been told.
Okay.
Continuing with the office of the principal, you'll see some
Why do we have both a certified and non-certified retirement?
Secretary.
Different rates.
I understand the different secretaries, okay.
And the reason that your retirement certified is so increased is because of the information contained in the salary lines of the $8,000 and the 2640. Any questions about page 17? Onto page 18, I would like to talk about custodial wages for a moment. Does anybody have any questions before we do that?
No, so Mr. Ruth?
Oh, no, I was just gonna ask at the very bottom, dear graduation, what is the dear class now? Roughly, do you remember?
Off the top of my head, sorry.
Is there a question, Mr. Winslow?
I can't recall it at the moment.
That's my excuse.
Custodial wages has been a bit of a challenge today, to try to figure out. Your current expense report shows a $5,000 overspend in custodial wages, which we'll make up some other way. Jocelyn and Tom will take a look at that. It appears, without 100% assurance, is that you had a vacant position last year that was missed when they budgeted. So you have two full-time and two part-time, right? That's what you have. And that hasn't changed, so I think what happened is one of your part-time positions, one of your three-hour-a-day positions was vacant when the business office last year went to do budgeting and they missed that, that, that calculation because the position was vacant. I have Ms. Young and Mr. Sares working on a solution. Is a $5,000 overspend, I'm not particularly concerned, I just want to make sure we can contain it in the cost center, or else I'll be coming back to you to let you know. But the reason that you see that 9.92% increase is not salaries or anything else, because they're CBA employees, it's that three-hour position that was missed last year.
I did have a hard time finding, filling those positions for quite a while.
Right, and I think what, what happens is, so we pull a position spreadsheet and like in the special ed position, Mark, somehow it just couldn't find it in the budget notes, couldn't find it today, we looked for, talked to Jocelyn, talked to Tom, looked at all our documents and records, and that's what it appears to be, because the year before, the difference between what was budgeted and this year was only about $1,000, so that tells me the increases that we missed, a small position. And that information's been forwarded to the budget committee as of this afternoon, because they questioned it. And I thank the budget committee for catching that, because it helped us straighten it out for this year. Any questions on page 18?
So I do have one question on that.
Sure.
These substitute wages, it says increase due to cost per hour. I thought substitute wages were $70 a day, regardless, is that not the case for
I don't think it is for custodians. We can look into that, I don't have that answer now, I think they pay an hourly rate.
Okay. Just look at the contract, make sure of that, just because I recall seeing it, but it was in there and I just didn't see it.
Well, I mean, the subrates for anybody aren't defined in the
Oh, they're not, okay.
Contract.
Okay. Maybe that's why I didn't see it then.
Right. Onto page 19. Your tractor is in here, just to let you know.
Mr. Wells isn't here to enjoy that.
Right, right, so that's $22,800. The other thing you need to
There is it, where?
Down at the, in the middle.
Oh, where, way down.
Last line, replacement of equipment. So the tractor quote is in there. The one thing I want to caution the board is, is in your SIP, you have paving. And we did not put that in your budget. You had budgets, you had projected $30,000 for paving. Again, I have the architect coming to present the cost estimates at the next meeting. All those pieces sort of work together on how we're gonna do that, so that's just something we need to remember to discuss and figure out how we're going to address. Then on to ground maintenance, largely that remains the same. Any questions on page 19? Did we put lead water testing in? Yes, yeah, also, just to let you know, in this cost center, I'm not gonna point out where the line is, the state mandates lead water testing and all, like drinking fountains and things, people and we did budget for that in the next year's budget, because that has to be completed by the 1st of July.
Oil tank maintenance on page, the bottom line, page 19. Seems like I just saw a bill here today that they came in, inspected the tanks and it was a heck of a lot more than 750 bucks, so.
Well, that's in
It was a whole different thing, no?
I don't know, because that wouldn't show up in your budget yet, because it was just processed, so it won't show up in it actually.
We had boiler service, we didn't have
Was it the boilers, and I'm thinking it was the oil tank thing? Okay, moving on.
Page 20.
Is your lead testing?
It's in there.
Oh, there's the lead testing, good. Page 20, you know, we're going down contracted services, water testing, there's not much there. Your 21% increase has to do with because of your lead testing. I'll give you the good news I'll give you the good news. If lead does show up in your water, there's a 1.4 or 8 or $6 million fund in the state that won't pay for your testing, but it will pay for your mitigation. So if you do have an issue with that, we will access that.
Well, do our pipes, well, they probably have lead joints. I mean, and our water comes from across the street, so...
It depends on what the numbers say and what you need to mitigate, so...
Can we do radio and testing as well?
No.
Not that I know of. I was going to ask about where we're close to then, fire stations. Do we, is it PFAS or something, the chemical that sometimes is a contaminant near fire stations? Do we do any other water, is there a general water test, or is it only lead testing?
Well, the thing is, we do get our water from the water district, right?
Yeah, right across the street, out back.
Right, so I'm sure they do all the testing on their water, but we're probably getting the benefit of that, I'm guessing.
Okay.
I mean, that's why the water district was created, was because of the...
And the water district handles testing.
The water district was created because of, there used to be a gas station where the mobile is now, that had polluted all the water.
Right, I have heard that.
And the one in front of the SAU. That's why you can't drink the water at the SAU.
That's a different one.
Yep, yeah, the different gas stations, so...
But we could, maybe check with them and find out what testing is done for the water, yeah?
Sure. I mean, maybe not in the budget, but...
Right, right, so nothing...
The Budget Committee, the Budget Committee gets that report.
Okay.
Ms. Young, would you mind talking to Mr. Sares, since he'll give you any detail on that?
Thank you.
Onto your school transportation line. A little point of celebration, you don't need to worry about bus driver stipends. And actually, when we get to my superintendent's report, I'll tell you about the testimony I gave at the State House today about the bus driver shortage. That's your projected number for your elementary transportation. Fabulous news that, actually, let me just check something. Just review for a second while I look at something. The good news is you budgeted $29,400 for homeless transportation last year, based on what you were using. And at this point, you don't have any homeless children that are accessing transportation, so that's good news for them and good news for you. We have kept some money in that line, because we never know what's going to happen. Just want you to be aware of that. Continuing, your special education, don't get too excited, your special education transportation elementary line is down by 6580. But then, if you turn the page, you're further broken down that line to include extended school year transportation, so we can track those expenses better. And so that really offsets right there, okay? We'll continue in the transportation section on page 21. Not a lot to really talk about there, except an increase in grade, $200 for grade level field trips.
This is per contract with the bus company, or is that anticipated?
No, that was, the board had asked to put in $1,200 into this year's budget, and I assumed you would want to do that, and I upped it to 1,800 to make it more easily divisible by nine grade levels.
Gotcha.
Then you go into your food service section. I know it's a little scary when we see a reduction from that, but we did hear from Fresh Picks, and that's their projected number for next year.
Reason is, they are now projecting serving fewer lunches and buying less food.
The sales are down, so your contract...
When can we remove the bond payments lines?
It's going to age out after this year.
After this year, okay.
If we just take it out of the report, Keith, what happens is it starts to throw off the numbers, or percentage calculations of increases and decreases.
That's fine.
We learned that lesson in another district.
Yes, in a difficult manner, we learned that lesson. Then we had to research all the lines that we took out.
Yeah, and that's when I got my nickname, accounting. So if you go into page 22, you can see that your total elementary costs are up 2.48%. Hearing no questions, let's go on to the good news section of the budget, which is page 23. You didn't need to budget for any other public high schools, which means you have no students in foster placement.
Still should leave a...
We should put a dollar in there. Underneath that, you'll see your Co-Brown Academy regular ed tuition numbers. For the newer board members, the, each student has a per head charge at Co-Brown. Special education students are included in this number, but then there's a $7,743 charge in the special ed section. So all your students are in this section.
That 5% increase, is that just a marker we have?
We just marked, we just put a marker in for you.
Yeah.
We'll get those numbers in November. If you look at software, High School Alt Ed, previously, you have a prescription, which is that number times three, that we evenly divide between the three districts, and we used to build your tuition lines for that. Just to clarify it, we created a new line for that cost, just so you know what it is, and took it out of your Co-Brown lines.
Are we still doing with the Co-Brown line, the two extra?
We did not put any extra students in yet, because I wanted to have, do we have a tuition reserve for them?
You do.
Yeah. I wanted to talk to you, you know, about where your reserve is at, what you'd like to do, how would you like to approach the budget? I just didn't want to, I wanted...
Well, I guess my question was the two that we had in there for the Alt Ed program.
Right. At this point, we put those two in there for Alt Ed for existing students, right?
Okay.
So this year, right now, you don't have any students in Alt Ed. So if a student leaves Co-Brown, we'll just access that budgeted tuition money, because they won't need it, and we'll be able to use that. And we don't need to budget for those students this year. You know, next year, if you have students there, we're going to have to budget.
Yep.
But at this year, those kids are included where they're going to school right now, which is at Co-Brown. So there's a discussion that we probably won't have to have in December, which will be refreshing, because we usually have that discussion for the Budget Committee every year. So we'll just say there's no need. If you go down to the high school special education section, you'll see how we put a 5% assumption on what you have for our professionals there. We still keep $2,000 in your extended school years high school, just in case there's a regression standard that we need to address with a child. Your contracted services are all in there in the notes. Your tuition at Co-Brown is down $63,408 based on your enrollments. And then your, you have a very interesting trend going on when it comes to out-of-district placement tuition. You have one elementary school student out-of-district placed, and then you have a charter school student, which you pay for the special education services. And so the bulk of your out-of-district placements are now in high school, and you have a reduced number in elementary school. That's a nice trend to see for budget reasons, but also for how the school's doing at meeting diverse student needs. And that's sort of a point of celebration for lots of different reasons. And then again, special education software high school, that's the portion of KC. And then if you look up above guidance software high school, that's the portion of ACUDY. So that's what we pay for those software systems for them to use to keep track of our paperwork.
Can I just jump back for a second?
Sure.
To the Co-Brown Academy tuition.
Yep.
We have four homeschoolers, homeschooled eighth graders. Did we do any verification that they're likely to go to Co-Brown, or is that just...
I know that Amy did verification. We'll have to check with her.
I'm sure that will come up in budget.
The problem is, we're verifying all of them right now, so I will get confused between Northwood, Nottingham, and Stratford.
Okay. It's fine, as long as the process is going on, that's the most, the way I want to.
We did speak about that budget-wise, and to your point, we'll make sure that we...
Okay. I just want to make sure it wasn't a guess, or, you know, some, you know, percentage.
Actually, when you look at the demographics, my, I think there are maybe a couple coming in, but there were, I think, a couple that were in the middle of their high school years. So you almost sort of assume that they're not...
So we'll be able to adjust that as we go on. I want to say, at, you know, 80% confidence that one was a yes, one was a no, and three were maybes. So that's what I want to say. And I could be talking about another district.
That's fine.
All right.
But we have not budgeted any money for the homeschooled children.
Right, only the ones that say they're...
Other than these four.
The four. We have four incoming homeschool eighth graders, so they're budgeted.
Right. No, I'm saying, yeah, I will go up and down. I just, at one point, we weren't even checking for the homeschoolers, so it was...
No, we, I asked Ms. West to do that a couple weeks ago. I just don't know exactly where she's at.
Yep, no worries. Thank you.
No problem. Your special education lines, I think I did do the majority of those. If there's not any questions on page 23, we can go on to page 24. So your special education section is down, even though that's where the majority of your out-of-district placements are. Speech therapy, we crunched your numbers between Nottingham, Stratford, and Northwood, and you had a slight reduction in your speech therapy. High school transportation, you had budgeted for three buses last year, and they're running with two, so we made that adjustment, and then the increase based on your contract. Your special education transportation high school, you have two unique situations going on right now. You had an out-of-district placement student who graduated early, okay?
With a diploma.
And then you also had a student who, who was placed out of the home by an outside agency. So you're just responsible for the tuition cost, and there is no transportation because they're living where they're going to school. So that's why you see that reduction there. Again, we're trying to break out ESY, and so ESY Transportation High School is in there. And we, we did leave $5,000 in homeless transportation high school, just in case there's an issue. So, that being said, your grand total, your budget is down at this point by $354,509.27. So I will put the budget back on the next agenda. Yes, Dave?
Under capital reserve funds. Could we just get the totals that are in there now? Because we have to decide about...
I have that separately for you.
Okay.
It should be in your report, too.
They live in our pocket.
And it's in your packet. But I need to caution the board, when you do review that information, those are balances as of 6/30/2018. So any warrant articles that you have are not on that sheet yet.
The only one that will have, will have a significant change of $10,000 is your capital fund for the building. The only other changes from June till now would be, you know, trivial amounts of interest. And you can see about what those interest payments are per month.
So I would recommend to the board that in the next agenda, we set a significant time aside for the budget. On your next agenda, I have the architect coming in non-public to talk to you about building security and the cost there. Then we'll be able to really put our heads together and figure out what you want to do after that.
Did you set up a work session for us, Keith?
We didn't set one up yet.
We didn't put the exact date that we talked about.
Yeah, we've talked about it, never actually said it, I don't think. We were talking about doing it November 29th, perhaps?
I thought you had a here forum that night.
Isn't that our actual day of the...
Forum.
Oh, that's the forum. That's where we set that up. Sorry, yeah. So we don't have a, sorry. We did not set up a forum session.
I would not recommend that you set a work session at this meeting, because I need to have my calendar with me and all my...
Well, if we're having a work session, and it's just common, maybe that would be a good time, even, instead of a regular board meeting, to bring in some outside people to, the architect or something, or is that...
The architect's coming to your next meeting.
Okay. So that's going to take some time, so I would think. It always takes more than we think it's going to take.
Right.
That's true.
I just wouldn't, I need to get my...
Okay.
Here's why, Dave. Mr. Winslow, I'm going to get some dates about Budget Committee, I hope.
Yep, I have copies for you.
Right. And the same in Nottingham, and then Stratford. So I need to get those in my calendar before I commit to extra sessions. Because it really is...
Can we have a work session?
But I, I don't want to commit to a lengthy time before we have a work session. And I appreciate your schedule, but I think that we don't want to wait too long and then be rushing through everything.
Yeah, I mean, we could, we could have a work session without you guys as well, and just do it with that board, and, you know, we won't be able to accomplish as much, obviously, but...
It's good to have you here, because you have answers for us, but there are times when...
Right. And I would prefer to be here to give you those answers, because I'd like to go much quickly.
I don't want us to, personally, I don't want us to wait too long, because I've seen it get so backed up, you just kind of rush through things.
I mean, when do you want to do it, Dave? When do you think it's going to be?
I'm pretty much free at night, except on Monday nights, but I can make an adjustment.
Like, what timeframe were you thinking? Like soon, like next week?
We just got this now, so we're all going to go home and kind of read through it, and we're going to have questions. We're going to go over it line by line again, so we probably should have some questions. And do we like what we've seen? I mean, is a 2.5% increase, is that within what we, seems reasonable to me right now, but I mean, it's just something...
Do you want to maybe shoot for, like, next Thursday?
Yeah, whatever, that works for me, but...
So...
The 25th, yeah.
I can't do next Thursday.
And I can remind people...
I'd like us five of us to be here before.
I'm at a conference, remember, in Florida, the 24th through the 27th, so...
We'll hold it down there with you then.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
We might have to adjust a line in our budget here for the...
I'm going for free.
For school board expenses.
Let's just think about it, then, and come back.
Afterwards, let's think about it.
Yeah, once we, once we get to our future meetings, let's discuss that.
Okay.
All right, so...
I'd just say thank you all for the work. I know this is a huge amount of work to put together. It's a yearly thing, I understand that, but it's appreciated.
Yeah, is there anything, any final questions we have on the budget, or anything like that for now? Revisit? Sure.
I've got everything else.
Excellent.
Thank you for your help.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right.
Did you get me my beer yet that's owed to me from...
I have, I've got it lined up.
All right, thank you.
He's waiting for a date from you.
Sorry, before you go, did, did we want to talk about the trust fund balances?
I've got it all.
You're going to take care of all of it?
I got it.
Okay, okay. All right, so I think we're going to move on to the principal's report, so that quarantine them soon.
Good evening, everybody.
Scooch this up here so you can hear Mr. Fun.
All right, first kind of cool thing on the principal's report, Twitter project in ELA. So some of the eighth graders in the Reader's Workshop, Language Arts, are going to be required to read a minimum of two self-selected books per quarter, and at least one of them, they have to, one of the books they select, they'll hand it a paper tweet. The tweet's obviously containing 280 spaces. But after the paper tweet meets the teacher's approval, the teacher will tweet out, Mr. Budwig, tweet it out on our new school Twitter book account, and will add the paper tweet to a bulletin board in the hallway. So each tweet will include the following: one-sentence review of the book, author's hashtag, the title's hashtag, our personal school handle. I don't know all the hip terms, I'm sorry. The school, I mean, the book's genre, hashtag, and a picture of the book's cover. A big one we're, stick was on, no student identifying information. I'm a big person of confidentiality, so I want to make sure we don't push that out. And, you know, the purpose of this project is to build, obviously, the culture of literacy in Northwood, to keep cultivating that. It develops a student's lexicon, because you got wordsmith around that, right? I had that same experience earlier today, where I had a huge tweet, and I had to condense it, and it was a little frustrating to get it all squeezed in there. and it was a little frustrating to get it all squeezed in there, but I actually appreciated the challenge. And then we're going to be, obviously, connecting with a lot more authors, including Ashley. Quality, we'll get more recommendations for quality books, and I think that it also shows in models how to appropriately use social media, which, as we know, is always something we can give more information on, how to use social media appropriately, so. This is pretty exciting. I look forward to seeing Mr. Ludwig and the seven eighth grade kids kind of take this on and really embrace it. It'll be pretty neat. Excuse me. Next little blurb, I'm going to actually call in Mrs. Porter to sack you for this one. But Drama Club has been doing a great time, right? Twenty-nine students to date. They've had two meetings so far, correct?
I think we're up to four, to thirty students, but yes.
Whoa, got a couple, got a couple add-ons there. Drama, Drama Club board positions are being figured out, or figured out?
Yep, today, they've worked it.
Yep. And we have one student from Coe Brown, Madison Rollins, who is doing her senior project and helping out, so. We got two skits lined up thus far.
Well, they're reading two different scripts.
Yeah, scripts.
Yep, and they're going to pick one to do in the spring.
Perfect. So that is my blurbs.
Next on the report, we had administered a parent survey last spring, and the building leadership team finally had its first meeting and looked, took a preliminary look at the data. We need to dig back into it. It was provided for you in the packet in black and white, which is awful, but I believe also got a colored copy, which is better. So there were some areas where we did, okay, and keep in mind, this is baseline data, but where we were pleased with the results that we got, and then there were certainly some areas that we went, huh, that we got to work on that. We had a hundred and six responses, so right off the bat, that's something that we'd like to increase, is the number of responses. We did provide, at our spring curriculum night, we did provide some computer stations in the building where parents could take the survey right then and there. But we had some technical challenges, and we didn't advertise that as well as we could, so that's certainly something that will improve upon next year, or this year. So a couple of things that stood out to us in our initial review is that behaviorally, a majority of people seem to think that our expectations are fair, and that we're helping to under, helping the kids to understand and meet them. I expect that that will go up, where we've implemented positive behavior interventions and support school-wide this year. What was I thinking? Most parents, it seemed that answered the survey, feel confident in supporting their children's learning at home, which we thought was a positive response. And then some areas that we immediately want to start paying attention to are the types of communication that parents receive at home and the reasons for them. A small percentage said that they're getting contacted by their child's school for positive acknowledgement, so that's definitely an area of growth for us. And then, a welcoming environment. We had fifty-five point six, so just over half, who thought that we did well or better at providing a welcoming environment, and that is far too low. So those are some areas that we'll continue to address with the leadership team, to develop some plans around how to improve those.
Can I have your colored copy?
Yeah, it has my scribbles all over it, but.
I don't think Mr. Winslow.
Yeah, thank you.
Better in color, I'll tell you that.
Oh, did you get color one, too?
I was listening.
Where'd you get that?
I have connections here.
Do you really need this? Did you get this? You have it, too? I'm not the only one who didn't get that.
You were, Mr. Winslow.
And I really don't have an answer for you.
Next, Mr. Tom provided a facilities update, just a few things that he has had addressed and repaired in the last few weeks.
Question?
Yep.
Said no answer roofing for a roof leak, a roof leak in the girls' bathroom, but the bill that we paid said they didn't find a leak in the girls' bathroom.
No, they found a leak, it wasn't a roof leak, so it was a pipe.
Find out what it was?
Yeah, it was just a pipe.
Pipe?
Yep.
From inside, okay.
We have a couple fundraising requests. Ms. Boudreau is requesting to be able to hold two jeans days, where staff members would pay a dollar to wear jeans, and those funds would be used to purchase candy that would then be handed out at the trunk or treat. That's not a school event, but it's certainly an event that brings the school and the community together. And she noted that last year, several staff members spent several hours sorting and bagging small pieces of candy, so the idea is to go with a little bit bigger in volume, fewer in number, so that they're not spending so much of their time on that. We also have a check from Deerfield Fair for two hundred and fifty, fifteen dollars for our participation in the fair this year. Congratulations to our students and Mrs. Legasi. We placed second in the elementary school exhibit, which is pretty cool. And then, a couple pages further into the packet, you have a pretty extensive list. Let me get started. Maybe it's one page. Oh, sorry, the next page. Of eighth-grade fundraising activities that Mrs. Libree and Mrs. Gorley are seeking approval on. This is not necessarily a complete list. They may have some more things closer to the spring that they want to do, but this is the vast majority of the activities that they're requesting. So we are looking for approval of deposit of the Deerfield Fair check, the eighth-grade fundraisers, and the trunk or treat fundraiser.
Can I just say, so moved? So moved.
Second. You're taking notes, put your name in.
Okay.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
And then just a couple other things. I had handed out letters from sixth-grade students inviting you to the tomb tours next week. If you do have a work session next Thursday, you could schedule around that.
That's the date? That'd be perfect.
Yep. And then I also want to remind you, at your November first meeting, Mr. Alfred and I will not be here. We'll be traveling to Nashville that night. We will consult with Mr. Rooning ahead of time about our report, and Ms. Brown will be here to represent administration. Oh, and one final thing. Mr. Rooning asked us to do, fill out this checklist, the Northwood Strategic Planning Checklist, just from our perspective. So we did that. It's in the packet, but we're going to review it at a different time, is my understanding.
I can go to the next agenda.
And just as a caveat, I will say, for priority, all of this stuff is important, because it's in the strategic plan, so this is relative priority. And a lot of that was based on what made sense to us to come first, what needed to come first before other things could have happened. So it's not like we're saying things are unimportant. And that really is it, I believe.
Do you have any questions, Ms. Young?
Nope.
No, no. Thank you very much for your report. Been well.
Thank you.
Good night.
Feel better. Thank you.
It's actually all an act, she just wants sympathy.
Yeah, I talked to her at six-thirty this morning, it was not an act.
Mr. Rooning, will you collect these at the end and just leave them in a pile, and I'll get them in the morning?
Sure.
I'm sorry, can I, before you, before you go, there's, we can talk about this maybe at a different time, but there's a request from the parent for the gym usage.
Oh, thank you.
I'm just wondering what the status of that was.
Yes. Cold medicine fog, yes, I'm glad you brought that up. So we, our facilities use policy requires insurance unless waived by the school board, so Judy Loto is requesting that her daughter, Skye, be able to practice tennis. She has a blossoming tennis career, and is more than happy to sign the waiver of, whatever it's called, liability. And so we are also looking for board approval to waive the insurance requirement for them, and I have her email if anybody would like to read it.
There are times that she's requesting we don't interfere with any other.
Yeah, please.
Do we have a setup for tennis in there, a line?
No, no, just bounce, just bounce the ball against the wall.
Okay.
So I received, Mr. McWiggin. Did I forward your solutions today?
Some, yeah, it sounded like some of them.
Ms. McWiggin forwarded me the email this morning, and I had it checked, both by Primex, who's your liability carrier, and by your attorney. So one solution is what's called the toilet program, which is offered by Primex for people in situations like this. The other solution is to sign a home, hold harmless indemnification as the waiver. So you, what the board can do is they can waive it and instruct me to get that document from the attorney.
It's in the policy anyway, that.
Well, the policy, I was looking at the policy. The policy just deals with organizations, doesn't deal with individuals so much.
So we did get a quick, we were pretty quick this morning, too. If, if the board agrees to waive it, then I will get in touch with Attorney Goro and have her draw up the document, and then we'll have the parents sign. And then we'll use that as a model going forward, so.
Well, we should have, really have a policy.
Yeah.
For, for individual use. Because we have the policy for organization use, which has the insurance requirements, but we don't really have a policy for individual use.
Would you also check, and I believe this is a New Hampshire law, if we let them use public facilities and we don't charge them, that they can't come back after us. So we're talking about them signing a save thing, just like Little League has you sign a paper that says if you hurt.
Yeah, I think, well.
But anyway, that's just.
My understanding is that the, the hold hard indemnification isn't about the person getting hurt, it's about hurting somebody else by accident.
Well, I think it's two parts, right? One is, one is the person getting hurt, one is if the person hurts somebody else in their, entering their activities.
Right.
The liability of that. And I think they can, they can sign a waiver for their kid getting hurt, you know, and waive that. I'm just not so sure about how they can waive the other side, because they, that, you know, someone's walked through the gym, gets hit, or something like that. So I think we can waive that. And but then, but with the understanding that if somebody gets hurt, we might be, the district might be liable for that, for whatever.
Again, there's a Good Samaritan law in New Ha, I call it Good Samaritan, I'm sure there's another name for it, where basically it used to even be about baseball. If somebody hits a foul ball and it hits you, nobody's responsible. You're responsible for yourself. So maybe laws.
It could be, yeah.
I'll make a motion to waive the insurance requirement, provided that she'll sign an updated liability waiver as advised by attorneys, as Mr. Rooning discussed.
Can you get all that?
No.
Second. Whatever he said.
Any further discussion on this? The only thing I'd like to put out there is maybe just have, you know, instructions that, you know, the, the gym needs to be empty, right? Then nobody else should be using that. I don't, I just don't want anyone else to get hurt and be put in a position where we might be in that situation, but. But I don't think that's going to be a problem.
Certainly say that to them, yeah. I mean, she may have her mother or a trainer with her, we don't know.
Well, I think, really.
Mother, mother.
Yeah, yeah, I was thinking about this. I think we really do need, and we should maybe ask the policy, can you do this, to have a policy on individual use of facilities? Which, which things like, hey, if you're, you know, under eighteen, you need to have a parent present, you know, things like that, you know, but, you know. Other, you know, there's organizations that have, have priority, perhaps, and things like that, you know.
Is she a regular student here, or?
She's a former student. She's a freshman at Coe Brown.
Yeah, so Northwood resident.
Yep.
Personal use is included in your existing policy, yeah, number six. Actually, personal.
Personal, right, that's the list of priorities as to.
Right, so you have that, actually, in front of all the town groups, it's pretty impressive. So you have the ability to do that. Sounds to me like what, you want a procedure for personal use.
Oh, yeah. Okay, procedure or a policy, yeah. I mean, this, this policy is talking about organization. It talks about, you know, when organizations want to use it. We don't really have anything talking about when individuals want to use it. So if we want to add to this policy, or have a new policy, or attach a procedure, any of those things would be fine. I just.
Could be for anything. Somebody could be coming in to, because they're competing in the Elks foul shooting contest, and they're coming in to practice, so.
And if three or four kids want to come in and use the basketball hoops, you know, at random times, you know, like, I, I'd just like to have something that says when that's allowed, not.
I mean, isn't this on the table, on the agenda for tonight, this particular?
It is, yeah.
What, what you can do is, when you go, to look at the policy, you can float it back to Policy Committee.
Right.
And then, we don't need to talk tonight, we can take away that.
Anyway, so sorry, I did get a little off.
What she does well, tennis, good.
Twenty hours a week of practice. That's not fooling around.
She's an ice skater, or whatever else. The kids today, it's just unbelievable.
Any other discussion on the motion in front of us?
Nope.
The, the insurance. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. We can let her know.
Yeah, let her know I will be in touch within a couple of days, so if you can give me some contact info, that would be great.
Sure.
It's on the email list, I guess. I can get the phone number.
Phone number on there.
Yep.
Yeah, it is, actually, yep.
It is.
That's true.
All right, I don't need that. Go home and rest.
If during your work session, any questions come up specific to the budget that I have control over, feel free to email them to me. I won't have time to get them into my report, but I'll have them ready for you for Mr. Rooning to deliver at your next meeting.
Thanks.
Good night.
Thank you.
Rest.
Sorry to keep you this late, even.
All right, take care now.
So who's substitute principal? Would that be you?
Excuse me?
Who's substitute principal? Nobody?
Next in line would be Kat.
Unfortunately, I'm in negotiations tomorrow morning, so I can't be two places.
That's true.
And I have a phone conference at one, so, yeah, I'll be available if there's a problem. Actually, I'll check with Mr. Byrne and see what he's doing tomorrow.
Yeah. Okay, so.
I have been the substitute principal before, but I'm afraid I can't now.
All right, we're going to circle back around to our traditional agenda schedule here and get on our consent agenda. All right?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was.
So on page four, it's page twelve, we have our minutes in our enrollment report on our consent agenda. We can choose to approve them wholesale, or take them apart and do things to them if you want. So I'll make a motion to just approve the consent agenda as is.
Second.
Any discussion on that?
Yeah, I did have a question on enrollment, page twelve. Paper's so fine, I can't. We seem to have a couple extra kids. Just ever, it just seems like previous, we've gained three kids here, which doesn't affect us that much, but didn't Coe Brown jump up another couple of kids? Three kids?
Um, there was. There was a couple that I signed, signed into Coe Brown last meeting, I believe.
This time of the year, to get an extra three kids, it's a little different for Coe Brown.
There's more here, but I don't think so.
And on our, the elementary school, this month, total three eighty-six. Last month, was last month actually June? Says August, but is last month really a figure from June? Four hundred and six, that's twenty kids difference less, so curious.
That's June, I believe.
That was brought up at the Budget Committee meeting last night as well.
Just, just comment.
Did you tell him it's none of your business?
I did not.
All right, any other comments or questions? All in favor of approving the consent agenda?
Aye. I'm going to stay in, I haven't had a thorough chance to look.
So three passes, three zero with one extension. Okay, we'll move on to the Business Administration report that Mr. Rooning is going to.
You can just give me a second to finish my notes.
Sure.
Sorry about that. It's on page fifteen, that's okay.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so page fifteen is actually a document that's kept the D R A, which is called your permanent record. Didn't know about that, did you? And so that is your permanent record of your trust funds. And if you, just so you know what that is, because we will try to give that to you every year. And then if you turn to page sixteen, and let me. And then if you turn to page sixteen, and let me grab my notes. The fund with the balance, and these are six thirty balances, okay? So you've gained a little interest and plus, in this account, you want to shift ten thousand dollars into it because of your warrant article.
This account is which?
It is building, fund, capital improvement. You want to label that because the labels on here are very confusing.
These are all capital reserve funds as opposed to expendable.
Right. Trust funds. Correct.
Can you, do you know what the difference is between them? Have we figured that out yet? Like, as far as spending, are we allowed to spend or do we need to have a town meeting to spend out of these versus expendable trust?
No, you are the agents of the fund.
Do you have to have, I believe we have to have a public meeting right here. We can say we want to use it and if public can.
You have to have a hearing. You have to listen to the public.
Yep.
And then you control.
And is, how is that different from a expendable trust fund, if that's, if there is any difference?
You know, I haven't seen an expendable trust fund used in, since I became a central office administrator, so.
So they're, okay, so that's.
I think there's been a shift away from that.
Right.
So the process for a, as far as you know, for a capital reserve fund.
Since you are the agents of the fund. I did do some research because your funds have, actually, if you want a little history lesson sometime, come to the S A U and I'll show you minutes all the way back to the nineteen sixties that each year you look, you can see when your funds were created and how they were, and when they were renamed and it's sort of a fascinating.
I bet it is.
History lesson. So that first one, and there's two copies of it in here, I don't know why. Maybe not in yours, but in mine. Is your capital improvement. And the one that says FBO, TTF, SD, NWD, SPL, being benefit, trust.
Special ed.
Is not special ed. Actually, we are in the process of trying to figure out what that fund is. It's a small balance fund.
At page eighteen?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's a small balance.
Do we, do we skip seventeen?
What is that?
Yeah, what's up with seventeen?
Seventeen's a duplicate of sixteen.
That's different numbers. It's off by six hundred.
And it's a different account number too at the top, so.
That's our special ed.
Seventeen is your special ed fund, I'm sorry. It just happens to be almost the same as your building trust fund.
That's, that's kind of, that's kind of intentional, I think.
And then, page eighteen, we are going, we are in the process of researching what that is.
I don't know.
Which is why I know all about those records.
It's really not that old. It's only two thousand and ten it was created.
Well, you have to go back to the permanent record and look at that.
Right, that's why I am, yeah.
Yeah, they all go back to seventeen, seven thirty-one.
Well, it could have been in two thousand and ten it was modified. Unfortunately, I didn't start here until two thousand and thirteen. It looks like it's some sort of benefit trust fund, but we don't know exactly what.
Is that part of the retirement?
No, retirements.
But we would have had more than that. No, we, we, we used some.
Our plan is to.
We paid off retiring teachers maybe out of it?
That's a different fund.
That's a different one, yeah, that's the next one.
Yeah, that one.
So we're in the process of researching that and I can't answer you with any specificity because the title is so confusing.
That's weird.
Then on page nineteen. Are your retirement payouts? That's the fund you're describing.
And that's all we got left is a thousand.
Right, because.
We've used it out.
Now, is that for the, the teachers, the early retirement fund, or is that for any retirement things that come out?
Help pay for sick pay. Remember, they get all the days of sick pay. Something like that to help us with those big costs.
Right.
Yep.
In the day.
Yep. We, because we haven't contributed to this for a long time either, I don't think.
That might be a good one for a warrant article.
And then page twenty. That's your tuition.
That's Cobran. So one sixty, divide that by ten is sixteen, so we're pretty much on ballpark. If we don't. But always our original goal was to fund for about ten students.
What's tuition right now?
Well, we guessed that it was sixteen thousand in the estimate. So roughly fifteen to sixteen, we're pretty close to that.
So now, when we talk about budget, we want to sort of have a discussion about whether you want to budget for extra kids because it seems like you met your goal on your trust fund, so you probably don't need to do that any longer.
Well, our original intent was, it, it was for the kids we don't know about. We always guessed four or five. So we'll have to have that discussion.
Yeah, you can have a discussion and choose to put that in your budget or just say, we're done because we've met our goal. And then page twenty-one. Is a building maintenance account, which was originally, I believe, your matching grant.
This is the grounds maintenance. Because we already have a building capital one, so we, we changed to be grounds.
We've got to look at the permanent record.
Is this something we set up, that was set up because we were trying to get matching funds and we had to put some money in? So that could have been for anything, for building maintenance.
Well, no, this was, this was, it was a matching grant.
Maintenance replace improved building grounds, playgrounds.
We had a, we set it up as a matching grant fund, then we didn't use it as a matching grant fund because the grant that we were.
And you changed it last year.
So we changed it last year to grounds reserve fund.
Right, so just an idea for the board. Again, I'm just gonna, these are your decisions to make, but you have some paving issues coming up. You might want to think about that. Just a thought.
Yep. You got paving coming up and did we have paved the basketball court, paved the front end?
If we, if we do need to have a, some twenty percent match for the safety. Or, you know.
That's not a grant.
A grant.
I think it's.
Actually, that'd come from the building.
I mean, I got like a little schematic in my head to present to you. Next time I don't want to sort of, sort of work it. Because it's like from here, from here, from here, from here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And then you probably won't need a bond or a warrant. So I got a little issue, you know, I got some thoughts going that you can change. But I've been working them in my head. And then that's, and then that's that, and then it's just a copy of your CIP, just for budget planning purposes. We've gone over that before.
So one thing that maybe we should. I'd like to see a packet x meeting props is what our anticipated liability is for retirement costs. It's hard to, I mean, I don't know that we need to.
It'd be easier. We only probably got three or four in line in the next six years.
Well, yeah, but they didn't.
They should figure it out, absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, but retirement, you know, they can announce that they're going to retire and get the three years, you know, a thousand dollars, but they don't have to do that. You know, they could just retire like this too.
Exactly.
And we still have the sick pay buyout, you know, things like that. It'd be nice to know what, just what that cost is. I don't anticipate, we'll, we'll need that much in our fund, but it'll give us an idea of whether our fund's appropriate or not.
Right. For whether or not we put in more for the warrant.
Can you clarify?
So, so what are, what is our retirement liability for staff? Right, so this would include any.
So let's give me some assumptions, right?
Yep.
You're talking everybody here today.
Yeah, I don't know that everybody here today is eligible for some of these things.
Everybody here today that's retirement, that's eligible for retirement.
Yeah.
We can do that. I don't know if you're going to be able to get that for your next meeting.
Okay.
Think about the operation involved there, right?
Yeah, yeah, right, that's right. If you want some help, I can do some spreadsheets.
We said that, we said that. We said that for retirement, but we also have, over the last few years, is the administrations leaving early.
Well, that too, right, that's.
I don't know if you can use the same fund or we have to set up a whole new trust.
I mean, we have to look at the contracts too to see what it is, right? It's gonna be like, I, I'm more familiar with the, with the professional contract, but it's like after ten years, they get a, you know, whatever sick days they have, you know, get up to fifty-five.
So you're looking for their liability on their buyouts. You're not looking for what we're going to pay for retirement until they retire.
No, no.
Okay.
Right.
That's what it is.
Yes, yes.
Well, yes, we'll get that for you.
Well, yeah, but that's not, we don't need that. No, I'm talking about like when they, when, when they leave.
That's right.
So existing employees, not retirement, but buyout, basically.
Like the buyouts.
Payouts.
Right, the payouts at the end. And not only employees, like all employees too, or like even the administration.
Right, so then the pairs do.
Yep, the pairs would come into that as well.
All right.
But that's fine.
We'll work on that, but that may take a while.
Yeah, it's fine. I can give you the pairs. But, but you see why, like this, this fund, when you get a buyout, say sick days get fought, someone leaves, that money will have to come out of the current budget, but it's not going to be budgeted for.
Right.
Right.
You might have to rename that fund then.
Yes.
What is the fund right now?
Retirement.
So what is, what is retirement? This is, was just for the twenty percent.
Well, you're really talking about severance.
Okay, whatever you want to call it.
Let me give you an example. Can I use somebody in the audience? Do you mind if I use somebody in the audience? So let's say that there's a very experienced guidance counselor, right? Who prior to retirement age decides to leave and go to another district, which we hope never happens, right? But if she did, based on her years of service, she would have a liability to pay out there. It's not a retirement, it's a payout.
Yeah, right.
It's a severance. It's a separation.
Yep. Now, that's based on. And that, and that payout is based on like sick.
Paid my back. Yeah, it's based on the CBA. Yeah, so it's just gonna take us a while to do, but I'm sure we can figure out a way to do it.
Yeah. I'm not looking for something exact because we're not gonna probably fund this, you know, warrant our whole fund this completely anyway. Because not everyone's gonna retire at the same time, I hope.
You just want to know where your liabilities are.
Yeah, and so we have some ideas.
You want to know where your sick day liability is.
What is, what's other than sick day?
Well, for administrators, you're administrators, you have vacation.
Vacation, right, they got vacation buyback. Do the professionals get vacation buy, buyouts?
No vacation, okay.
Either have one fund and you change it to a retirement slash make up a word. You're saying severance, but I mean.
Severance sounds severe.
And then we have one account and then you can use it either way. But otherwise, you'd have to have two accounts, I would think, so.
I mean, you could probably rename it.
Use it for two.
We, well, we'd have to have a warrant article to rename it, but we could do that.
Change the title.
Yep.
Right, the warrant article would just change the title.
And I think we might be able to, I mean, we did discover that A D S could give us a total sick time liability for a week, so maybe that can do that. We'll see.
Good. Have you read my thing about sick days?
I'll go up here.
Yeah, that's what we need to meet at one point, figure out how we're gonna.
But that's what I'm worried about is these unexpected expenses down the road that we haven't budgeted for. Whatever they may be.
Yeah, I mean, you can also look at it from the perspective that if your wonderful and seasoned guidance counselor left and you bought things out of that line, you're probably gonna have a correspondent saving, savings from a new hire.
Perhaps.
You're gonna look at it that way too.
That's true, yeah.
It won't be as good or preferred, but.
That's a good point. I never thought about that.
Do you know what I mean?
Yep. But it may not be the case either.
Can I make a motion? Will we buy a screw for the facilities manager so we can screw it up there, put the clock here so I can see the clock?
You can sit over here. I can see the clock just fine.
Here's a quarter, I'll give him a quarter.
Dave, do you want my phone?
No, no.
Wiggle it, I'll give you the.
You gotta ditch your flip phone.
Wait a minute, see, I got this right here. You gonna put it in front of me?
There you go.
Sorry, that, all right. Since that motion, since that motion lacked a second, I'm not gonna let it go over.
No second, I'll send it again.
So there's your trust fund balances, your balance, SIP, you've got your budget. You do have a current expense report. Again, it's early in the year. We don't need to, we need to go through it now. And then we've also started including your grants.
Sorry, I'm just looking at the SIP real quick here. Is the tractor not in our CIP?
No, it's in your budget.
Wasn't on the CIP before though? I mean, CIP was developed, you know, last year.
But is the tractor capital improvement or is that equipment?
Equipment. That's why it's not here.
That's what I'm looking at, but.
Okay.
You know, I'm not always right.
Yep. So like you said, the, and the computer replacement plan is in the budget.
Yep, everything's in there except for.
Except for the paving. All right, so did you move on to the revenue report already?
I mean, I can.
Is there any, anybody have any questions about the capital reserve funds?
If you go to page twenty-three, let me just run you through this.
Well, just, everybody else out with capital reserve funds? Okay.
If you go to page twenty-three, you.
For me.
Yeah, okay. If you look at your revenue report, this looks a little different for you right now. See where it says revised budget and it's all zero. We're waiting for our MS twenty-four to come back so we can enter those. Like, you know, you've got kindergarten aid, somewhere around forty-six thousand dollars. So those revenues will adjust once we get that report back from the state.
What? I'm confused.
So see this here, see this column where it says all zero?
Yeah, I'm confused by that.
You have to wait for your DOE and MS twenty-four's to come back for Mr. O'Sullivan to enter those numbers in there.
That's fine.
That's all.
I'm not confused by that. I'm confused by the numbers themselves. Like our district assessment is not three point two million, it's more like eight million. I mean, if you look at the grand total of our revenue, it's three point seven million. That's not, doesn't match our budget. So we're nowhere close.
This is received.
Right, so we have.
That's what you've gotten so far.
Okay, so there's no anticipated.
Right, if you go down to, let's just take adequacy because I've got that, right?
Okay.
You can't anticipate it yet because those numbers need to be put in. Those numbers come off your state forms that have been submitted and need to come back for approval. For instance, if you look at your adequacy grant, that is your first thirty percent. Right? So we've booked that we've received things, but we can't put your current budget.
So you're saying, so you're saying when we get the form from the state, then we can.
Then these numbers, these numbers will change.
Okay, all right, that's fine then.
Like your, yeah, like what was projected for adequacy last year during budget season is different from the number that I know right now, working in your favor. So like kindergarten aid, we booked some kindergarten aid. We know what the number is, but we need to wait for those forms to come back from the state to put that in.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Kindergarten aid, can you, what, what is that? Is that the Keno money?
Yep, that's Keno garden money.
So the, so the eleven hundred per student is, is in adequacy still? And this is just.
No, it's separate. So you get half adequacy for kindergarten.
Right.
Right, so that's in your adequacy total.
Right.
And then you get another eleven hundred dollars in kindergarten aid, Keno garden aid.
Eleven hundred plus Keno money or whatever.
No, the Keno money's eleven hundred per kid. The adequacy is half that.
They get more than they thought.
Adequacy is like thirty-six per kid or?
Well, it's fifty percent.
Right, so it'll be, what, eighteen per kid?
So if you, if you had half day kindergarten, you get fifty percent adequacy for that kindergarten class, right? If you have full day kindergarten, you still get the fifty percent adequacy, but then you get the additional eleven hundred kid and the kindergarten aid.
Okay. So it comes up to like eighty percent of the adequacy.
I thought it was, I thought it was eleven hundred per kid plus Keno money, but.
No, the eleven hundred dollars is the Keno money.
So if there was zero Keno money received by the state, we'd get zero kindergarten aid, is what you're saying?
Right, you get half adequacy.
I don't think that, I don't remember it that way, but I could be wrong. I thought there was some, some funding and then keep more.
This one? You know how I say sometimes I don't know?
This one you know?
Alright. Fine. And tomorrow, when you're in my office, I'll print out the memo and show it to you. Because I've been through it four times.
I believe you. Just doesn't work the way I thought it did, that's all.
Well, I don't think it was clear the way it worked. Well, this is where it's confusing, because I think everybody had an understanding of how it was gonna work, and then it worked a different way. Like, I didn't necessarily anticipate you were going to get kindergarten money this year.
Right.
But you did. And then it adjusted, so they took it off your sixteen seventeen enrollment, and then as soon as we did the end of year for this past year, it adjusted upward. So, you went from like twenty-six to forty-six thousand.
So how off of regular, like, the funding would it be for like a regular grade? Like, how much are we, are they not compensating?
You mean adequacy?
Yeah.
Well.
So.
When you add in the Keno money.
Well.
About five hundred less a student.
Okay.
So it, it also depends on, so adequacy, you've get a, you get a base level, about thirty-five hundred per kid, right? But then you get a differential for special ed, a differential for proficiency level, a differential for ESOL, a differential for socioeconomic status, so then you add, so you get thirty-five plus, 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 so this kid could actually give you more adequacy money than that kid. So, to try to formulate it in your head is sort of a lesson in futility.
Spreadsheet would do great.
We have, I have a spreadsheet. But even within the spreadsheet, it doesn't, you know, I know what the ADM is, but I can't break it down to per student, so.
It ends up being about thirty-six hundred per student.
Plus. Yeah.
Thank you for explaining that.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, and I do have a spreadsheet, and you know what, when budgeting's over and we're sort of looking for things to fill the agenda, I can come in and give you an adequacy presentation.
Do it about three, that's when my bad time is.
So, New Hampshire SBA does webinars every once in a while, I don't know if you've seen them. They all send out emails, but on their website, I think you can go there and look at past ones, and one of the ones they had was state funding that talked all about adequacy grants and stuff too, so that's, if you're interested in that, could definitely go look that up. And it gets more, even more into that, and then to, what's that, New Hampshire income tax, not the income tax, the New Hampshire tax for.
Business?
Adequacy, there's some.
The state you swept.
Swept, that's it. It goes into swept a little bit and stuff, which is totally confusing, and I still don't understand.
Very confusing. So swept is the money that you collect in your statewide education property tax. So when you look at your property tax bill, you see your state, right? So, you take your adequacy number, you subtract your local swept money, and that's the money that you get from the state.
Right.
So.
It's a state pretending it's collecting taxes, but they're not.
Well, it depends. Some kind of communities benefit from the swept, right? And some don't, based on your equalized valuation and how you've collected. So, it depends what community you're in. But, I'll give the board a little task. If you look at your adequacy grant right now, the four hundred and fifty-six thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four, that is thirty percent of your adequacy money for this year. So if you do some math and add it in, you can figure out what your adequacy money was for this year, and that is the real number, because you've already got an check for your thirty percent. And the kindergarten aid, although that adjusts, is the same. So. Yep, one point five. So about one point five million in adequacy is what you got. Alright.
Sorry, that took way longer than.
Well, that's alright. Again, unless the board wants me to, I'm not gonna go through the expense report page by page.
So early in the year still?
It's so early in the year, and there's still things we're finding and adjusting. Like, I know that I adjusted some custodial lines today, because what happens is, let me explain this to the board, just so they understand. An encumbrance is set in the system, and then you pay off that encumbrance, right? With our financial system, with, it's, in a perfect world, when you pay off that encumbrance, it should reduce the encumbrance and increase the expense, right? In our system, we need to do that manually. So, once a month after we do financial review, we need to say, this line, when the line appears overspent, we have to go back into the line and release the encumbrance, and then reencumber the remaining piece, which is really quite laborious. So. I've learned a lot about business this year, so. So at this point in the year, and that, and that's why, in the past, some people go through and set their encumbrances right off the bat based on estimate, it's just so confusing to do that. You wanna base your encumbrance off your first invoice, and then you still have to go through that process, so.
I'd like to comment to Budget Committee met last night, the document they looked at was a few days older than this document, but they went through it pretty nitty gritty, so.
Even this early in the year.
Say draft on every page? Because at one time, we had to put draft on what we sent the Budget Committee, so they wouldn't pick the pot.
Right, well, I've actually got a, I've sent a pretty detailed email to Mr. Winslow today, to the Budget Committee, explaining different things, and I'm hoping to have a discussion about, they want, you know, everything printed on this day and then sent out, right? The problem with that is I haven't had a financial meeting before your packet goes out. So those financials that they're receiving could be, or might not be, or maybe, unvetted or vetted, based on how the calendar falls. So my request today was, if we could consider modifying this request to the last financials approved but that went to the board, then there's a better chance it'll be vetted, because they'll be different.
They're different every day if you do it daily.
Right, right. So.
We'll take all their questions under advisement.
No, they were very good questions.
No, they were, they were, they were fine, they were, exactly, they were completely appropriate and submitted and got a quick response, which I think you both forced.
So, so when those, those answers, do they just go to the chair, and she distributes them to the Budget Committee as a whole?
Here's, I take notes on anything that I don't have an answer, that I can't give an answer, or at the evening, I, this morning I emailed Mr. Rooning, should have been only Mr. Rooning, but also Mr. O'Sullivan. Mr. Rooning then took charge of that appropriately. They did research, figured out what they needed to do, answered the questions, uncovered the issue with the, perhaps the miss, the the part-time custodian that we discussed earlier tonight. Emailed me back answers, and then I send that to the Board Secretary.
Okay. So I'm just wondering, when a typical member gets these, but, I guess at the next meeting.
Secretary gets it, she sends it to all the others sixteen members?
Okay.
She should.
Should, I have not, I, so I emailed her probably at about three o'clock this evening, this afternoon.
Yeah, it took me a while to, I had to go testify at the State House, and then I came back and did it. It wasn't a real, it wasn't as fluid as this morning with you.
I thought it was, I thought it was pretty timely.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
So, and then after your financial, do you have questions about anything on, after your financial review, we've put your local grants in there, just so you can start to get familiar with them. Again, those are questions that you're gonna wanna talk to Jocelyn about. I approve grants, I don't manage them, so it's not like the budget where, you know.
You're still on the budget?
Or just, there's grant reports in there that, that you can look at. You have two Title Twos running. You have one for one year, one for another year.
Okay, thank you.
And they last for more than a year. It's incredibly confusing. You probably have two REPs running too.
So under the revised budget, is this what the grant was approved for, or just?
Yeah.
We're spending it for, okay. And then the spending, then the.
Then it goes in the balances. Our hopes is that our grants are spent down by the time they close.
Makes sense.
And, just, you know, I think your building principal's, principal is appreciating that, because it was a report they never got before. So, I think record-keeping, it helps. Might be a little confusing for board members and for, for me sometimes, but I think it's helpful to the administrator to manage that money.
I guess one question I would have is just on the ones that don't have dates on them. You know, like the Title Twos, like, when do they expire? Oh, is it over here?
It's in the top, right?
Ah, okay, okay. So that's one needs to be spent. That's when it closes, is on the end of the year.
Yep.
Oh, that's just. You're right, about the weird dates, right, this is, this is a.
Eighteen month.
Yeah. And then this is a somewhat overlapping.
Yep.
Eighteen months.
Isn't it fabulous?
They're all like that?
They all have different spans and dates. And then sometimes you get what's called carryover, which means they've allocated everything the state, it hasn't been used, and then they reallocate it back to you, which just causes, I mean, it's great to get more money, but it just costs a lot.
Like, while the rent's still open, they want more money.
Yeah, happens to IDA a lot. I'll get an allocation, and then, I can speak a little clearer about IDA, because they did it for years, but, you know, we get a four hundred and twenty thousand dollar allocation, and then in May, they're like, eh, we're gonna give you another fourteen thousand.
Let's put those in. Yeah. I like seeing that, that's great.
We're trying to do that for all the districts in the SEU, I don't know if we've done the SEU this month, but, that's because our IDA grant still isn't approved, so. It's been there for a long time.
Thank you.
I think I did your submission for IDA on the first of July. We still haven't gotten approval. Alright.
Okay.
For that.
Any, any questions about the budget for the?
Just, do we have a contract for oil for this year? It might have been done before I was around.
For this year, yes, we need to go out for bid for next year. And for this year.
Sorry, no, I don't need to know as long as.
No, I think I have it.
We're contracted, so we'll have a fairly good price, I'm not, just listening to news, starting to get worried about the cost of going up.
Costs are going up. Just give me a second, let me see. You're locked, I believe. But, let me just get in here. I don't have the notes from last year, but I know you're locked. It's next year I'm worried about, and we upped the budget because of that.
Alright, let's move on to policies.
So in your packet, you have school facility use, but given the discussion tonight, it might be wise to just give that right back to the Policy Committee.
Why? Well, I think, yeah, we can discuss some of it now. I think a lot of it, it does make sense for what we're doing for groups, you know, and organizations, which is what this, I think, seems to focus on. But yeah, I think we would wanna send it back for, for non-group. Non-group.
Individual use or.
Individual use or small, you know, non-organized group use, or something like that, right? I didn't mean to ask, I know we do, you probably don't know this, but we have adult basketball uses the gym occasionally.
Yes, and, uh, Sunday night or Monday night.
Yeah.
Trying to figure it out right now, what night.
But is that a, that's not through the rec commission, right?
Yeah.
It is.
Oh, it is, okay, so the rec, the rec provides some insurance for that.
Yep.
I mean, they always have.
Insurance waivers and stuff, okay.
It's an adult program.
I didn't realize it was through rec, I thought it was just a bunch of people doing it themselves, you know, so I was wondering about what the insurance.
We shouldn't be charging them a fee or anything.
It's free.
It's free.
Yeah.
No, no, I mean, the schools shouldn't be charging them a.
Right.
Through the town rec, yeah.
I mean, the service charges are listed out here too, right? In this policy, we do talk about service charges.
Yes.
Right, so, I mean, it looks like it's kind of left to the administration.
Well, that was, I was gonna get to that. I went over these before, but then as I've reread them, I keep coming up with different questions, not too big. And that should have been, that basically, that at least when somebody, they are charging somebody, they should at least have a note to the board that such and such group is being charged to use the facility. Only because at one time, I'm going back a few years, that adult youth group was being charged to use the facility, well, like, when we found out, it was like.
Well, I think you have it covered if you look.
You're saying adult youth group?
The same group was using it. I said an adult youth, well, they act like kids when they're all four.
Yeah, I'm all in favor of that. I mean, this, so, so, this is the first reading of this policy, I think we should, we should send it back to the Policy Committee looking for changes, I think that's a perfectly valid thing to be asking for.
We can make some of the changes here.
Yep, yep, well, these are gonna be, make notes of this.
So if you go to page sixty-two, and look at use without rental charge, we can certainly add that the board will be notified of any rental charges.
Also, any facility ours follows, unless we've, the school board.
Right, but then if you look at page sixty-two.
Yeah, just sentence.
It basically says, you're not gonna charge nonprofit groups.
Right.
That are, programs that are designed to be educational, recreational, culturally beneficial to Northwood students or citizens. Alright, so you have a disclaimer in there.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if it's, that has to come to the board each time. I mean, technically, I don't think the rec commission, the rec commission programs would fit under that clause. Because it's not.
Recreational.
We are a nonprofit, and we are.
We are a nonprofit, but it's nonprofits who present programs that are designed to be educationally recrea, oh, recreational.
Yes.
Okay.
It's alright.
I guess it would fit.
On page, on page sixty, just a recommendation for me, even though I read it, I would like to see the first, the first sentence and the next sentence like all in capital letters. This is a facility, publicly owned facility, supposed to be used as a community center.
You want that, you want it bolded?
Yeah, I want to, because we seem to have changes over the years, where people have kinda taken over being in charge of it, so.
Got it.
Northwood Youth Activities, I would know if we should have said Northwood Recreation, but I don't think we need that now, I just kinda was making myself notes.
So if you go down to, on page sixty, the insurance part, this is the part I was referring to.
Insurance, page sixty.
It says, the using organization may be required to furnish appropriate public liability and property damage insurance, and then the whole next paragraph goes into that.
Yeah.
Which is fine, I agree with that, it's just that, this is what I was saying, it's kind of directed towards organizations, not towards individuals, we should have some, something in there talking about non-organizational entities using the facilities and then the insurance requirements for that.
A lot of groups that do use it, like recreation's insured, the Little Leagues are all insured, AAU teams are all insured.
So I just put a little note for us to add a personal use class.
You can't, me as an individual, I can't get a policy, I've tried.
Well, right, and that, and that's, maybe we should talk about that, right, because if, if, I mean, obviously, I think it's easy enough to get a, you know, to ask personal people to sign a waiver, saying that, you know, they're responsible for themselves. But if I read that email right, the, the problem is that if the person who signed the waiver really, releasing us from liability from them, did not necessarily sign a waiver, if they did something to hurt somebody else.
They didn't waive somebody else's rights.
Right, they didn't waive somebody else's rights. So if somebody comes in and, you know, what I was, you know, some kid is, is walking through the gym to get his bag after soccer practice or whatever, and gets hit in the head with a, with a baseball or something, right? That, that kid may, it sounded like we're not covered for that. Well, we may, we may not be covered that, our liability insurance may not cover that. And that's concerning.
You'll get sued anyway.
You have a.
You don't have the right to sign your child's rights.
No, and I get that, that's what I'm saying, is that, but if an organization's doing it, then it's the NHSBA or whatever that's gonna be.
Your insurance policy has a medical payments provision, because.
That's why we have insurance.
Not gonna discuss that here, but it's been used.
Right, no, I understand that, yeah.
So, you do have that coverage.
But then why would we need the third-party option that the Primex was talking about?
The Tula program?
The Tula thing. Like, when, when would you need that then?
Again, I need time to. Again, I need time to research, I mean, that was like quick turnaround.
Which is fine, yeah, yeah, yeah. So I just want to make sure there's no holes there, and if there's any holes, we could...
Well, what we can do is make our changes, and then I can actually send this one out.
Yep.
To Diane. Say, "Hey, here are our questions."
Yeah.
And then, you know, you'll get built for it, but...
And it could as well be that, you know, that everybody needs to sign the waiver that's in the, in the room at the time or something like that, you know, which is in order for that, and if somebody walks in, you gotta stop or something.
We can check that out.
Hey, but I'm all for, this is, this is one of our strategic...
Yep.
Plan things is to get more people using this, even...
No, I think you've made some improvements to it already.
Yeah, I, page 63. We have, under gymnasium rules, we do have in italics about a little over a third down, "The board authorizes one key to be issued to the Recreation Department." Supervi... it should be one set of keys, I think, because they get more than one key. They have to operate the lights, the baskets, that's all, minor.
Got it. The only other thing I did wanna make a suggestion that we change too is in a few places it says the principal, and even it was changed to say the principal.
Did we mess it up?
Uh, no, I, I don't know, maybe did, but, um...
We changed it to the principal, but it used to be the athletic director.
I think it should be the principal or, or someone who's, the principal's designated or something like that, right? If the principal wants to, you know...
Principal usually would get the request anyway, because it just comes to the office normally, but they would just pass it off to say, "Hey, check this out," but...
Wasn't that part of...
Used to be, it is part of the athletic director's job, but...
I just think, I just think the principal should be able to farm this out if they want to.
Well, isn't that up to them anyway, because they're the principal?
Well, the principal can, without saying designate, the principal can farm it out to the assistant principal, because they are considered one.
Yep.
In this case, I think there's been some history, and the principal likes to...
Which is fine, I have no problem with that, I just...
I think I might stick and see how that works, because I think he has corrected some issues by doing that. In fact, I know you have.
By doing what?
Making the authority explicitly the principal. My only concern is if the, the principal's sick.
Then you have the assistant principal. I mean, we can add it, or designate.
You know what I mean, though, but, not designate, what's the word I'm looking for?
If your, if your principal is sick, right, your assistant principal is going to assume those duties. If your assistant principal's sick, is it you? No. Somebody else within the building is going to assume those duties as the principal.
Is it principal or acting principal?
Sorry, so it would be the acting principal or whatever, yeah. Okay, let's find them. I can live with that.
She didn't like that question.
Page 63 still?
Question?
Back to 63?
A rule I like, and it's been in there for 15 odd years, and it keeps the place pretty good, is no food, no gum, no snacks, no coffee. I think over the years, that's, we have to really make sure we take care of that. But the water bottles, even now, Co Brown and the other gyms are allowing parents to have a bottle of water with them or something. But not coffee, not drinks, because that's what spills and gets all sticky and makes a mess, so, exceptions may be offered. I think if we check all this, we may want to come up with a decision on that. In other words, you go walk in there as a spectator, you can't bring a thing with you. You can't bring a bottle for your kid, because the kid's supposed to bring his bottle. So just, and again, I know we went over this, and now, as I reread, I start thinking of things that were problems, so, I'll just... And the other thing on that, right under that, is bleachers and baskets, we changed this to be operated by qualified adults, the people who use it at the rec, or somebody should at least learn or had been taught by somebody, there's just, there is kind of a little bit of a certain way to pull it out and put it back, so it doesn't twist or cock or whatever you want to. But the other thing we need is we've got to leave the hook out for the side baskets. The baskets on the side were designed and you put in and bought, so that you could lower them down. There's a certain hook that you use, and it used to be left out all the time.
They were locked in a way.
And now I hear that it's, they can never find it, it's locked up, it's you gotta, it's like crazy. It's a, it's a piece of pipe with a hook on the end that you lower and raise the baskets. And you have a key to...
No, that's fine, I don't think we need, I don't think that's something we need to put in the policy, but...
That's something we want to view, review with the president.
When we get back over to equipment on the back page, might be a good one, but, okay. Now that we get back to the back page...
So we are gonna put a clause in there for individual use, I guess I'd just like to point out that I'd like to see something in the individual use clause about, you know, minors. You know, maybe something you're gonna do anyway, I just want to point that out. Overall, it's good, thank you.
What, I'll just go on to page 64? It's back to my thing.
62?
Top of page 64. I thought we had put it in, maybe we just forgot again. Clean up, dry mop, leave us a, leave us a mop that's like about five or six feet wide, not a two-foot wide to do, that's all. Or leave us the right equipment, I don't know.
I don't believe that's a, but that's not a policy issue.
I agree with you there, but yeah, it's not something when you put in the policy.
It's not a policy issue.
Okay. Well, that would say, leave the hook in there. All right, well, then we will...
Here, here's what the board can do.
All right.
Once you have a policy in place, right? Then you can ask for the procedures to be developed.
All right.
And then when the procedures are developed and presented by the administration, then you can give feedback on that, and you can either approve those procedures or you can rescind those procedures. That's the way it works.
All right, that's fine.
And it does that for your benefit, so you're not getting caught in minutia about six-foot mops, so...
Any other, any other suggestions for the policy committee, or we send this back to them? Overall, it's what I'll say.
How long does that take roughly, when you, do they meet once a month, and then it'll come back to us after?
Once a month?
First, supposed to be the first, we had it today, but it's supposed to be the next meeting. So that might be good to get it back. I do, now that I've seen it again, is that rate, on the same page 64, the use of the kitchen, 25 bucks an hour, does that seem like, that rate was in there for a long time?
That's to compensate the employee.
Yeah, oh, no, I know what it's for, is that rate appropriate, enough?
That's...
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. I'm done.
All right, we have a motion to send this to second reading with the amendments.
I think we're sending it back to the policy committee, right?
Motion to send it back, or the motion?
Send it back.
Wasn't here in 1992?
Neither was I.
Is it? He's very nice.
Pretty sure.
I think I remember him telling me that.
And this must be in Stroud or the, in Stroud or...
It is, it is. And then the one up top is, I think it's related to Bunny.
That is, yeah, that is Bunny.
That is Bunny.
That is Bunny, that's her name.
That is Bunny. Sorry. I love the history.
These are all first readings today?
No.
First three, okay, I see. All right, so we also have a first reading of policy, JICI prohibiting weapons on school property.
Make a motion to accept it or to move it on?
Move it to second reading, yeah.
Can I answer some questions?
Let's get the motion first.
Put the corrections up?
I'll flag the motion.
Okay, any discussion? I'll start with you.
I had this one written by your attorney.
Good enough for me.
Based on the conflict between state law and federal law.
Okay.
So...
Anything to point out that's interesting?
No, that she was pretty thorough, I would point that out.
Any discussion on this? All in favor of moving this to second reading? Motion carries for zero. We also have policy JJJ, access to public school programs by non-public charter school and home educated pupils. This is also a first reading. I'll make a motion to move this to second reading.
Second there.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. All right, now we have three policy, three, no, sorry, two policies that are at second reading, so we'll be looking to adopt these. Policy EH, data management, starting on page 75.
We'll make a motion to move policy EH to...
To adopt it.
To adopt it, thank you.
Second. Any discussion on this? So I assume this is all, this is based on...
Model and changes.
Yep, yep. All in favor of adopting this policy?
Aye.
Motion carries. Am I going too fast for you, Amy?
Nope, you're fine.
Did we vote?
Yes.
Yeah. Sorry. I'm making a motion to withdraw.
You're on my second.
I apologize. Let's go to page 80, number 12.
I don't think, we didn't vote on...
We didn't go there yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm making a motion...
Never mind, so I'll...
Sorry, we didn't...
You didn't do much, yeah, we just leave it.
We didn't, we didn't vote on withdrawing it anyway, so, a little cancelable throw.
I'm sorry, I got confused.
Okay.
Next policy is EHA, computer security, email and internet communications policy.
Make a motion to adopt policy EHAA.
Second.
Discussion of corrections.
Number 12, let's go into the 21st century and change personal DIS to personal storage devices.
This was first approved in '07. I have still, I might still have some DIS over in my office, so...
You know what I mean?
I'm just wondering, I'm just wondering if that's overly strict as well.
I'm sorry?
I'm just wondering if that's overly strict at this point, but...
It is how we pick up things sometimes.
This is true. Is everybody okay with that modification?
Yep.
Yeah.
Let's vote on adopting this policy as amended. In favor? Policy is adopted. That is it for policies for today. We'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Personnel report, I'm page 82. Let me get there. Stipends.
Should we do them one at a time or make them a little group?
Stipends are usually, we've been doing them as informational, so... We can just say thank you.
Next is page 84. The memo from the treasurer.
We're skipping bus ridership?
Bus ridership, we reached out to Dale for bus ridership, for all three districts, still working on it. Put it on the agenda, because it's supposed to be on the agenda, but they will get that to us hopefully for your next meeting.
So push that.
Just get that one down, I'm sorry. Return to page 84.
Oh, yeah, I'm gonna have to look that up.
What?
With the current.
She put it on the...
51.
Current's 51.
So apparently...
So page 84 is a note, is a memo from the district treasurer.
Makes now, it's four grand, yeah.
And on page 85, actually, I want to give you a new page, 85. It didn't copy the... There's another page on the back of page 85 here, I'm just gonna get this one.
What, this comes out of our, I think it's in your school board, if I can reach it?
Yeah. You should pay 4,000 dollars. School board services, page 814.
Oh, you're in the expense report, I'm sorry.
That's our, either should work, but...
Well, not when I'm looking at page eight.
Yeah, so 4,000.
This is what we bud, what we budgeted for.
4,000.
We happen to have, and let's find if this is not appropriate to ask, but we happen to have Nottingham, Nottingham's treasurers.
Not with me, not with me. Well, wait.
Because she cited Stroud.
Just give me a minute. Okay. I'm just curious, because, yeah, it's pointing out one, but not the other, so it'd be interesting to see.
I agree.
So just give me a few minutes.
Well, even in the second part of deputy treasurer, does anybody here know who it is?
It's, it's Ms. West, I think.
Yeah, I think it's Bunny.
Bunny, then?
Uh, we don't know. To what was. See, this is an elected position, so we, it's out of our realm.
Yeah, but the deputy treasurer is, she appoints.
Okay, you know what, Amy was the one for the SEU, that's what I was thinking of.
Amy's the one for the SEU, I do believe I'm correct, but I'd give it 80%.
Yeah, that's who was doing it all the time. She was never paid, or we'd never know.
Key, I'll be right back.
So this is, comes out to be $6,000. I'm having a hard time biting my tongue. What are you doing, guys? Well, I'll tell you what, she waves that thing.
I read it in the one before.
Under the table, we're... But that's what it is, it's now from 4,000 up to 6,000. Because we never paid the 500, she never get paid for the...
So she wants us all...
She wants to get paid to travel now to them, to them. In the realm of the things that she supposedly does, it's probably... But it's not like that official, so, so we say, you ran for the, we didn't... But it's not like that official, so, so we say, you ran for the, we didn't have nothing to do with it. And the town vote has approved her salary, in this sense, because we put it in the budget, so. By electing her, they elected her free. So that's what's crazy about the government, it's ridiculous, how we run them like it was eighteen, like that rule she gave was started in eighteen ninety-seven.
I know.
That's what drives me crazy.
Yep.
She, she does a ton of this stuff. I mean, it looks like a lot, but it's not, will she?
If you're talking about personnel, I can hear you on the recording.
Oh, crap. Just saw you. Thank you. No. Shut the mic off if you're gonna say something you don't want anybody to hear.
Better, just don't say it.
Not in public.
Yeah.
I didn't say anything that I didn't, I heard, so.
Sounds like a. About the issue. You know, I think you can hold on your decision until the next meeting.
Yeah, well, I think, I'd wanna hold on it to our next meeting, no matter what, but since this is the first we're seeing it, but we could have a discussion.
Scanning board packets right now to see if I can find.
So, sorry, we don't have anything set up to cover the deputy treasurer's wages?
Never had.
I'm just wondering how that would work.
Don't know.
Right, like, if we have a budget, they still need, we would still have to pay it. And.
You'd like a stipend?
I don't know how it works, it's an elected position. We have, we posted in our budget, in a sense, the pay, so the town approved.
Right. Yeah, I'm just wondering how the, how the deputy treasurer would get paid, how the professional conference and travel would be reimbursed. You know, does that, does that come to us, we need to approve it, or?
Our thing to deputies' pay comes out of the treasurer's salary.
It would come to me as mileage.
Works if the other one's sick.
Right, I guess it would, then we're just going as a regular invoice.
Or just approve it, right, if your budget afford it, or just approve it. After I. Through my analysis of it. Just like anybody else.
Okay, yeah, so that, that was mostly what I wanted to make sure there was appropriate oversight. Twelve. Yeah, so this will be a two thousand dollar increase to our budget. If we approve the entire. As asked.
How much?
Two thousand.
Increase?
Increase to our budget, yeah.
Plus Fike.
Yes.
Here, just take, um, what, what's the salary?
Four thousand.
Fifty-two hundred.
So multiply that by a hundred and seven point six five. I'm sorry, I can't calculate right now, I'm looking at a packet, trying to find Nottingham.
We pay Fike on that, too?
Yes.
Is that in the, is it in there?
Well, you would, as government, you have to pay tax.
Fifty-two hundred multiplied by what?
Seven point.
It's seven point six five percent more.
So, if you multiply by.
One point zero seven six five.
You'll come up with the total number.
Fifty-five ninety-seven.
Okay, yep, so that's what the Fike is, wait. So we have a school district treasurer's salary. Gonna figure out, there's a Fike line that must be for all school board and.
Everybody. Now, you, you, while you guys are doing all that thing, I, me, I might get my thoughts, is we, at one time, when we.
Nottingham pays two thousand.
Two thousand, yeah.
Could you repeat, I don't know what you're talking about.
Nottingham pays their treasurer two thousand.
Okay.
We get paid two thousand as well. Right?
Yes.
Sure.
I promise someday I'll have all the answers.
I'm pretty sure.
That's not true. You guys get paid down two thousand, I get paid twenty-five hundred.
You got a big cheese.
She always donates.
Well, I'm putting in for a raise, anyway, for us, we're in the budget, that's all.
So I'm just trying to figure out what the, if this Fike line covers that.
Right?
I misheard, I thought you said we could pay two thousand, too.
That's your Fike line for everything.
Yep, it is, I just wanted to make sure.
So if you wanna figure out, just take the delta, the increase.
Yep.
So right now, it's what, four thousand, and what is she asking for?
Fifty-two.
So if you take twelve hundred and multiply it by one point oh seven six five.
Eighty bucks.
Yep. Zero, seven, six, five, yes, another ninety bucks.
Thirteen hundred.
Yeah, ninety-one.
Thirteen hundred.
Alright, why don't we? Does anybody wanna take action on this now? Wanna put it on our next agenda?
Next agenda.
Yeah.
So we can, we can think about it and.
There's a ton of work that she does, I have no problem with all of this of that, it's just, we just got this request and. There's a, another eight hundred dollars added on to it that we never did before.
Do we wanna send back any questions? I guess this is another thing we do, because I'd be interested, like, well, how?
How many hours do you put in?
How many hours you put in, what do, what do the deputy treasurer, how often, how many hours do they put in?
Yeah.
You know, how often, um. You know, the, the professional conference, I think, is a great idea, I think, I'd totally be for that, even.
And she did explain that to me, it's not like she just goes to anything, she goes and ones that are relevant.
Yeah.
Yep, yep, I think.
So. Yeah. So how often for the deputy treasurer?
Yeah, what are the, I mean. Historically, I guess.
What was your other question?
She comes, she probably just comes to sign, she probably doesn't do any of the other banking things, I would think, yeah, so it's a good question.
No, estimate of the, the number of hours spent.
For the treasurer, yeah.
The travel and parking fees, is that for travel to the conference? Or is that for?
Yes, it could be travel to the conference and parking fees for the conference.
Or is that it? Or is that for, is it for other things, like, is there travel required of the position?
I'm just gonna ask her to detail the travel.
Okay. I was wondering if she goes anywhere besides the SAU.
Right.
Well. I think if, if she goes to the SAU and then goes to the bank, that's a, that's a travel expense. But if somebody goes from home to the SAU, that's not a travel expense.
Okay.
I mean, that's the way I treat our employees, so let me explain how I, um, sort of philosophically think about mileage, right? I always have everybody take mileage from the office, okay? And it doesn't mean that some days it's gonna work out better than others for either person, but it's a standard, right? So I'll give you an example, when I go up to my commissioners' meeting in June. The distance from the office is less to the Mount Washington, to Bretton Woods, than it is from Elliott to Bretton Woods, right? But I take the mileage from the office. Conversely, if I have a workshop in, um, Portland, Maine. Even though it's shorter for me to drive from Elliott, I'm still taking mileage from the office, because we want it to be fair, spread.
You may. Well, I understand the theory, yeah.
Ethically, that's, business ethics, that's the way.
It's a standard.
It's a standard practice, because it creates, it creates consistency in.
Right.
Right?
Right, there's no.
Because you don't wanna be sitting, not me specifically, but you don't want sitting around going, so, because then you have the ability to take a greater pay.
Win some, you lose some, break even, that's what I.
Right, you use a consistent.
Yeah.
Now, if I have a conference in Portsmouth. I'm not taking mileage from the office, it's miles out from my house, but I'm just saying that, you know, it's a standard, and that's what I expect from the employees. So your commute, you take mileage from the office.
School board members were, we used to have a budget for travel, and we figured out that by the time you make a check for going eleven miles or five miles or whatever. It just wasn't worth it, and that's why we, we left the, the pay at this certain thing, we said, fine, that'll cover our expenses of travel and stuff, so we've never, and. That was probably eight years ago.
But I would also say, right, but I would also say to the board, you know, I mean, generally. When you have a conference to go to as a school board member, you're going to Congress, right? That's twenty-two miles. Each way. And it's twenty-two miles of expense reimbursement.
Alright, that's fine, I think we got the questions for the treasurer, do they have anything else we want clarification for? Okay, so we will move on to new business, and which we have none of, but we do have committee reports.
Uh, we had, oh.
You go first.
Oh, mine's real short, yeah, facility, I'm sorry, facilities, facilities haven't met, so I have nothing for facilities. Uh, which I would have questions about.
Is facilities, do you anticipate this meeting soon, so that, because I think it's gonna be important for budgeting?
Yeah, I would hope so, and I asked Shane if, because he's the one with the weird schedule.
Yep.
If he would come up with a, a day in time, we could do it, so.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Policy committees, we went over five policies, and one was data governance and security, we put on hold, because Scott's gonna make us some changes. And then the last one was a website accessibility, and we're gonna bring that to Steve, so he can kinda go through it, too, before.
Website, what do you mean by that? What do you mean by that, website accessibility?
You can have the whole page. It was just a policy, uh.
It's a new.
Oh, accessible. Recommended, yeah, accessible.
I, I gotcha, alright, no.
So we wanted his input in it, so we didn't do anything. And the, the other ones, we, we put through that.
And the reason I held off on the data man, the, um, data securities and going to a school boards association training on the second, I wanna, and. Also in the policies, there's likely to be adjustments, so I'd like to go figure out what that might be, so we don't do it two or three times.
That's fine. What's left?
Yeah, clubs committee met before the board meeting this evening, they're proposing a, one more club, they have some updates as to, um, actually, who. Which clubs are in effect due to people leaving after, you know, they signed up for clubs last spring, and then they left. In some cases, we, other people have stepped up, in some cases, they haven't, I will have a detailed update for the board, most likely at the next meeting, but sometime in the near future. Um, and there will be a, um, a request requiring for one additional club at that time. Additionally, the budget committee met last night, I have calendars for both of you. My chicken scratch, I got disrupted. Says bring binders to avoid postage, which I think has been past practice, but I didn't.
On that Saturday, where you have your first big meeting, yeah.
So for.
Give me the big, the big binder?
Yeah, that's what they said.
We always bring them.
Yep, she, she thought, this was Ms. Holberg, just leaned and said, I'll just make sure you remember that, so you don't have to pay for postage for everybody, so I just made a little note. So it's just, this is a schedule from, uh, when the budget committee will be meeting in December and January. Dealing with the town budget, the cowboy budget, the water village district, and obviously, the school budget. The school budget is scheduled for, uh, December eighth, nine AM. And then, the school budget hearing is scheduled for January tenth at seven PM.
But you must have some other dates for, if, if Saturday doesn't get finished, did they have a couple other?
There are.
We put us in for that, anyway.
Yeah, yes, there are.
They are, they're. So they're looking for the binders on the first?
Yep.
First meeting on the.
And then the meeting on the eighth, so. They're really looking for the binders on the thirtieth.
Yeah, what she said is typically, um, you were, in the past, Mr. Godomski would come up on, uh, the Friday before and just start them off.
Yep.
Other updates from the committee, a few questions which we've, um, some of which we've addressed tonight. Mr. Ruining took the questions that I shared with him, came up with a very timely response, which I've, as I already discussed, emailed back to the board secretary. Reasonable questions about when will this, you know, be encumbered, or why is this line overspent, and, you know, those kinds of things. Other than that, first quarter, so not too, not too terribly nitpicky about stuff, you know, but, um.
Well, do you mind if I? The, how about the biggest question is they asked for a copy of the audit?
Yes.
And I had to share with them that we don't have the audit report, it hasn't been approved by the board, so I cannot provide it to you.
Yep.
Sounds like a fine answer to me.
What?
Sounds like a fine answer to me.
Yeah, and, um, that was actually my, I wasn't.
Yeah.
I wa, I, I wasn't one hundred percent confident, but I, when I was asked that, I said, I'm, I don't remember seeing an audit report at this time, so I don't, I don't think it's come to you yet. So that was, they heard that from both of us.
Yep.
But probably more definitively from Mr. Ruining, so.
So can I ask you a question about the calendar?
Sure.
We have the school budget, um, work session, I think, on the eighth, the Saturday morning.
Yeah.
And then on the tenth? Is that just a continuation, if needed?
If needed.
Yes, what, what their practice is, is they, they hope to accomplish everything on Saturday, the eighth, but, um, if they're getting to mid-afternoon, it looks like there's a long way to go. The committee will vote if they don't want to adjourn and come back on Monday, the tenth.
Okay.
So they'd like to stay late and finish the business.
So there, that is maybe a bit of an issue, because we have a SAU joint board meeting.
Joint board school meeting.
At night.
They've never met on Mondays before, either, they've always done it on Wednesdays.
Probably we can get done in one day, but that's, so.
There's another potential, um, conflict, I would think, on, uh, January third's a work session for the town and school. Thursday evening would, first Thursday of the month.
Yeah.
Would be a board meeting, so.
Yep.
If either of those work sessions, um, come into play, there'll be a potential that I'll, I'll have to choose between that committee or the school board.
Not, not, not just you, but all of us, and superintendent, and maybe the business administrator as well, I mean, they. I mean, you may wanna bring that to their attention sooner rather than later, and see if they wanna reschedule that, because.
Okay. Well, then, so, um. Okay. Thank you for pointing that out.
Yep.
For some reason, in my mind, I wasn't thinking about the administration, so.
Sorry, I'm just putting this on my phone, because I might forget if I don't.
Seventh inning, what inning you think it is, what is it? Must be the second, bottom of the second by now, at least, bottom of the third.
I don't think I have anything else from the budget committee.
Any other committees?
No, mine were canceled.
Okay, I had, uh, we did technology committee to meet this, last Thursday, I believe. We're still kind of in the process of organizing and trying to find, trying, it's a big group, and it's a lot of new members in the, in the group, so I think, um. Trying to write down, like, the, the technology committee's mission statement, so that we can kinda figure out what we should, what we should be doing and how to work together well. And so, it's mostly just kind of, we're going, we got a report from the technology director, that's what we always do, but, um, went through all the responsibilities. And how we, you know, see that, what we think the technology committee should be doing, which is mostly, uh, you know, collecting information about. Need, wants or needs from, from staff, and then, you know, figuring out what's appropriate, and then pushing back also, to, you know, doing training and things like that. As well as doing the technology plan, which is required by the state, so that'll be coming up, we'll be working on that as well. Yep, okay, any other committees I didn't think of? I hit them all. Old business. Few things.
There's a missed code in there. After we go through parking lot. We forgot lower parking lot lights discussion.
We'll do.
Should be under new business, but.
Yeah, that makes more sense.
I'll take care of that.
Do that later. Alright, so let's just go through the parking lot, and we'll do it in order for now. Parking lot, school board newsletter.
I will have one by the next time, I'm going to just mostly talk about the. SRO?
Yeah, that's a good idea, right, yeah, our hearing.
My brain doesn't work after nine PM very well.
That's fine, we'll go through this.
Was that in the budget?
Yes. Oh, the SRO? No, I thought we were talking, I'm looking at the tractor, I'm sorry, you're right, this is exactly what that is.
Yeah.
Tractor, school safety, we talked about competency presentation. Tractor, school safety, we talked about competency presentation, nothing to do about that now. The goal sheet we got, which was great, everybody can review that. And our student representatives, should we leave that in our parking lot or is that something we'll remember doing it now?
I think it's going.
It's in our agendas?
Well, no, you're going to have to do it again next August, right? Because she may not continue, so just leave it there.
Sure.
You might have to choose a new.
A new.
Or does it go into the timeline?
So I think it's good to leave it there.
Let's put it, let's put it as August 2019 then.
Yep.
You.
And there's no discussion, it's just choose.
It's just a task.
Yeah.
You mentioned the tractor on here. Did we get any, we got a kind of an idea of how much the cost is?
No, you have a quote.
We have quotes? Quote, or quotes?
A quote to base on the budget.
Okay.
Then we'll go out to bid.
And it's in the budget? That was in the proposed budget?
It's in your proposed budget.
Yeah.
The quote's in your proposed budget. Once you approve that, we'll go out to bid. We're not going to go out to bid now.
Oh, okay.
Well, we're not going to go out to bid until our budget's approved.
Right.
Right.
All right, anything else we want to add to the parking lot or address?
Are we revisiting blizzard bags at some point? That'd be a parking lot thing.
That was supposed to be on our agenda.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
That's okay, yeah. Let's pretend, let's pretend it's on our parking lot.
Yeah.
Well, what do we want, what do we want to do about it? What is it we're looking to accomplish? Just have a more discussion?
Well, I think that the last meeting, we had gone over a bunch of information about them. Yeah.
Did you get that?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yep. Just, and because it may not be something we want to dive into at this very moment, I thought we could revisit it when we have time to decide if we want to move forward with it or not or get feedback from, figure out if we even could get feedback. I don't really know where to go with it.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yep.
Why don't I talk to Jocelyn and say, this is not a rush right now, but we'd like you to design a potential, you know, sketch of a plan if we were to do blizzard bags and what that would look like. And then we can bring it back and talk about it.
So it does sound like something that should be on the parking lot then?
Yep.
You want the pros and cons of it, right?
Yeah, there's.
Yeah, I mean. The other thing to, maybe we can combine with it, is our calendar discussion, right? Like with the information that we got, how are we going to plan our next school year? So we could add that to the parking lot, blizzard bag discussion.
Yeah.
Timeframe.
Now, you're going to have to have, I think any potential calendar changes. You're going to have to assemble the calendar committee really quick here.
Yes, right.
Right? So would you like to, me to share some of my ideas really quickly, very quickly?
Yes.
Yes, but let's just, before we do that, I don't mind that, just one second. I just want, if we want to put a blizzard bag on here for discussion, a timeframe for that, I just want to put a timeframe down. I don't want it to be next week, next meeting, but I also don't want it to be, like, it doesn't need to be till, if it was to be implemented, it wouldn't be till next year.
Right.
Right, so we have time. So when is a good time before next year? Maybe over the summer? Should we talk to about it?
Do we do the calendar? You want to start the calendar?
Right, when we do the calendar.
January, February.
Don't, do you need, obviously, teachers need time to be able to prepare them.
I think your administrators need time to design the process. I think the board needs time to review the process. I think then you need time to implement the process.
Right.
If you choose to even do that.
Right.
Right.
That's the other thing is maybe we should have a board discussion. I don't want to go send off our administrators to look into this if the board's not going to be in favor of it anyway.
Mm-hmm.
Right, which may or may not be, right? So that might be something we want to consider as well, before, even before we ask them to do anything.
Before we ask Jocelyn for anything.
Right.
So why don't we put it in April? Because that's quieter.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Your elections are done, your budgets are done.
Yep, yep.
I mean, evaluations, but.
So in April, we'll come together, we'll put it on an agenda for the board, decide if we want to ask the administration to do further investigation. If so, then we'll ask them to do that, make a decision over the summer. All right, sorry, so calendar suggestions?
I've been looking at lots of different calendars. One of the ones I've been looking at is, is a calendar for my district. Not these districts, but my home district. And they got very creative with teacher workdays. They still have teacher workdays, but they cut down the number of them and they converted them to hours. So they have, for instance, three days converted to hours is roughly 20 hours, right? 21. So instead of having the teacher workdays, the staff agrees to work on individual, well, not really individual professional development, but they have to document hours. It needs to be outcome based. You can't have like, I had a rich discussion about that. No, it needs to be a product and it needs to document the hours of the product and its work. And it's done outside of the school day. And it converts to the teacher workday. So you have three teacher workdays in your calendars, you have 21 hours, so you're going to eliminate three teacher workdays from your calendars because they're doing that after school or at night or on weekends or in the summer. And there's an accountability structure there to do that. When you do that, you shrink your calendar by three days, right? Which with snow days and everything else is a rather attractive option. So in this district, they had a discussion, the administrators were concerned, how are we going to do whole school professional development if that happens? And what this district is, and I'm not recommending that, I'm just providing an idea, is they did, in the elementaries and intermediate school, they had a 90-minute early release on Wednesdays. Not in September, not in June, but on Wednesdays. And then on the high school, middle and high school, which doesn't apply. They did a 90-minute delay on Thursdays. And if you think of it from a professional development perspective, it really is an optimal period of time for professional development. I don't know how many times I've sat in a six-hour workshop and said to myself, they're doing to us exactly what they don't, what us doing to the kids. So as far as like here, it may, and again, this is just an idea and I'm not recommending or pushing this, something like your NIASC accreditation, we're going to need subcommittee work, that may work well. Now, there is lots of concern in the community about what the parents do and this and that. They put some surveys out, they got some survey data. You know, it isn't something we just want to decide to do, you want to really research it. And what they did is on those late starts and early delays, they rotated some of their paraprofessional staff to provide before and after care. Doesn't increase your budget because it's already a budget expense in your budget. So for that 90 minutes, you provide some, you know, before and after care for the parents who are working, they can't take the disruption to that schedule. There was apprehension in that, you know, how many kids will we have and da, 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 da. It turns out roughly at the lower grades, it's about 20 to 30 to maybe 40% of the student body, which is way less than what they predicted. What they noticed that when they consistently did that once a week, it was predictable for people. So that's just something to think about as far as the length of your calendar and snow days. You still, in this district, would have to offer the October day because that's your NEA day and that's part of your contract. And I would look to you to still offer the March PD day because that's my one time to work with the staff and have a speaker and do a keynote. I would prefer if we could figure out a way to align our 3K to A calendars so I had one day with everybody at the beginning of school, but the March day is the best that we can do right now. So that's just something to think about. And I don't think it's anything to take action on. I think it's a, something that needs to be researched and thought out. And there needs to be a lot of survey and community involvement in that to make that kind of decision.
Who's on the calendar committee for us? I'm me.
Am I now?
I don't know.
Pretty sure it is.
I don't remember. You know the tool, oh my god. And that's fine.
That's fine.
It's not listed here.
I don't know where it is listed. I'm quite sure it's you, but I'll check.
Something to pass along if it is you?
So I think it's a very interesting idea.
In the past, we've done things like that, have just half days, not half days, 10:30.
Yeah, I mean, kind of my thought on this is that if we're going to do this, and I think it's worth exploring, I think you would have to drive it. Like, is this something that you really want to do? I mean, do you think this would be better for the school? Do you think this would be better for the staff? Because you have much more, you're going to have all the knowledge about, you know.
What I, what I have observed, so I have done some trips over to watch. I have interviewed staff at the high school primarily because that's who was available the day that I went. I have some experience with it as an end user because I was using the before and after care because I had to work when my kids are younger. I think that if, that if it's something you want me to drive, that's fine, but I'd also like to take a trip with some board members, have them talk to some board members. Sort of a research kind of PD thing, I think we could. I can tell you that there's other districts. So what we've done is we formed a calendar, like a sort of southeast region, and the main districts happen to be included in that and show up for that. And there is some momentum among the superintendent who seem intrigued by this. But again, I don't think this is a next year thing.
Oh, of course.
I think this is, if you want me, as your superintendent, to work on that area, I'd be happy to. But I also know that I want some of you along for the ride to go and see things, to just help me design, the big thing is your constituency group. I want to know what they think. I want to know what they feel. And I already have spoken very esoterically with your unions and with your building administration. So I've done that work and there's some support there. There's some concern too. But I really think we need it to be well thought out. Because if you think about it, and I can tell you, it's really not a too new of a thought. When I first started teaching in 1993, I was at Kingswood Regional High School in Wolfboro, and they did it every Thursday. So this isn't a new concept. I think that trading days for hours is really pretty innovative and could really be a benefit, especially if there's a school by goal and somebody's giving 21 hours to achieving a school by goal, that's a pretty powerful amount of time. I think that, you know, I know climate change has been a lot in the news lately and I think there's some concern about that, but I also think that climate change, or maybe it's just weather patterns, we've got these strange weather patterns going on. You know, if I think about snow totals, and of course, I get to see the snow totals where I live a little better than you because it's on the coast, so things tend to melt quicker. But, you know, 10 years ago, it'd start in December and creep up in February, right? And then that's be your max and a drop off. And now what I'm seeing is big storm, lots of snow melt all the way down to the ground. Big snow, lots of storms, so there's these cycles. And I think, you know, you're seeing some two-day storms that you haven't really seen. So I don't know if that's a pattern issue, but.
I mean.
I think there's a lot of things we need to consider working on. So I would be happy to, I would be excited to work on that. I don't want anybody in the community to develop anxiety over this because this is just a.
First step.
This is a first step plan and it will be well thought out and people will be included if you decide to make that decision. But I certainly think it would be valuable to spend some of my Northwood time on that.
Would that be worth bringing up at the meeting Monday if the others look?
Yeah, maybe, right?
Only because I, you, I hate that we have all three schools, we're all going three different directions all the time. I don't know if it's worth, if they're not interested, fine, we're interested.
It's not on the agenda.
No.
We can ask, put it on the agenda for next meeting or something like that though, too. I mean, that's.
I certainly don't mind having. I don't mind having that discussion. I would like that discussion. How can we find Mr. Runing a common day at the beginning of the year? You know, I'd like to frame it that way. How can we work together to do this so I can actually have a keynote and a kickoff and a set? You know, this year I did a letter. That hasn't happened before. I think that was well received by the staff. I don't, you know, you have my presence in the building, I'm trying to work on that. But it would certainly be a great thing for me to give an hour. Do you agree? An hour kickoff and then maybe some sustained PD, some innovative PD, then everybody goes back and does their own thing.
Yeah. I think, I mean, it sounds, just by the nodding, I'm seeing that the board is in agreement that you should.
But as far as like.
Look into this if you want to.
Right. But I also think that, you know, I need to do things from a laboratory approach. And, you know, doing this for all three would be really hard right now if I could do it for one. If I can do it for one.
So you don't see advantages to doing it for all three?
I do see advantages to doing it for all three, but I also think that starting in isolation and then working out might be a better approach for, almost like a pilot.
Right.
Yeah. And then, you know, if some other idea comes up, we can have one of them be a pilot, you know, for that. And then we can, you know.
I think, I think we're saying, go for it.
All right.
Go for it, come back with it.
All right.
I would caution, I would caution you, just.
Yep.
It's your first year and that's a big chunk to be biting off the chew. If you, you know, don't kill yourself with doing.
No, I think we've got a two-year process here anyway.
Yeah.
So the superintendent of marshals has already offered to have anybody come over and ask questions. So I might have put together some people and maybe a couple of board members and some leadership and let them go without me and, you know, ask some questions.
Would you be comfortable putting this on the parking lot as a follow-up?
Yep.
And what kind of date?
I think, again, the spring is a good time. I think we've got a lot going on right now.
Yeah, next five months, you've got a ton.
You know, one of the things I do need to put on the parking lot is to look at your CBA and figure out when the calendar committee starts to meet. And I think that's pretty quickly, I can't remember. So, I mean, that's my next task.
That may be more of an immediate thing.
That's hugely important.
Right. Well, that's, you know what? That's typically on our, on our timeline. So if it's not on our timeline, then we have to do something about it. We should add it to our timeline, then we have to do something about it.
Well, I can tell you this, I did look.
It's in January. Discussion of school calendar with board is in January.
Right, which means that committee needs to meet before then. And we need to figure out who the ref is from the board.
It's Mr. Ruth.
It is?
Yes.
For what?
Calendar.
Calendar, yes, okay.
So if I look at, your calendar was adopted on the 22nd of February.
Right. So January is what?
Okay.
I think we have time. There's no rush on that.
All right, all right. So I think what I'll do is talk to Ms. Young and then reach out to you. Maybe we could, you know, take a trip?
Yeah.
And take a look?
Why would you get this? You're just hiding under the.
Are you hiding in color?
What they, what, just curious, spring?
I just would, let's just do it after the reorg in March.
Okay.
Right, after the reorg. That's a short meeting.
No. It's usually a longer meeting.
All right, well.
After the reorg is fine, not the reorg meeting.
So April, along with blizzard bag. Actually, that aligns quite well, doesn't it?
Yeah.
All right.
Right, because, yeah. Okay, I think all we have left really is the lower parking lot lights discussion.
So apparently, I heard from Lieutenant Wells, Mr. Wells, that your parking lot lights are on a timer. And what he has told me, it happened during the safety committee or something, is they learned that when the timer was purchased, it was the base level of timer that turns it on at this time and turns it off at that time, you're not able to adjust it. So Mr. Wells asked me to put that on the agenda to see if the school board wanted to spend some money to get a timer. Ms. Young today. Ms. Young today told me that Tom just put it on his list of duties. And so when he leaves, they turn the lights on, and when they come in in the morning and it's light out, they turn the lights on. They can manually do it, on top of the timer.
Where is the switch?
Dave.
Okay. My, I would say, find out what the cost is to do it, it's not something, somebody goes all day in and.
I think it's within the building.
Oh, okay.
I think it's within the building.
They don't have to truck down there.
Right, it's not like they have to go down and throw a switch like a scoreboard.
So instead of, instead of using the timer.
It sounds like regular maintenance, you buy, we buy everything else.
So I think they've gotta figure it out where you just, you know, they've got it on their list of things to do, and they just turn it on and off. So I think you're okay for now, but I certainly can have to price it out, too.
I would price it out.
Well, I think, I mean, you, no timer's gonna do the job, no matter how fancy it is, cause.
You gotta test for the season.
But if it's a solar.
Maybe a really fancy one may be kind, but.
No, they could get a, they could definitely get a electric eye timer.
That's true, yeah, just a sensor, a light sensor.
That's what I meant.
It's a clock, you know, like if you have a 180 or anything else, it's a little box.
Oh, you can do that, but if you want it to be really effective, you do a sensor.
Right.
And then it senses when it's dark.
Right, and then if it's.
Even during a solar eclipse?
Well, we don't need them on all night long.
Because it gets dark so early.
Well.
That's true, too.
Does having them on reduce, well, here's the other issue. They just replaced all the lights with the LEDs, so your electric costs aren't gonna go on with, up, up with having those on all night. So it's really low, low cost.
I mean.
So right now, they're just turning them off, like when the last custodian leaves in the evening or something?
No, they're turning them on.
In the morning.
No, they're turning them on.
Tom comes in and shuts them off at 5:30 in the morning when he gets here.
Yep.
But if he's not here, then who's gonna do it?
Who else is?
The lights will be on.
It just falls to whoever else is here.
I'd say get them.
That seems, that seems like a very.
I just put price-out timer.
Yep.
We're good.
But for right now, we have a solution.
That sounds like a permanent solution to me. It's perfectly fine, people flipping lights on and off when they.
For the price of a tree.
Here's your closing and opening duty.
Right, right, that's just part of, like, you have to unlock the doors too, guess what? You know, you don't need a timer for that.
It works better than the financial system.
From 1897.
Budget committee.
Lit the lamp, and in the morning, they blew it out of there.
That's it for that.
Alright, so future agenda items, unfortunately, we're supposed to be spending all of our time on budget, we added a bunch of other stuff. So with budget, we're reviewing the strategic plan checklist, which is good, perhaps a bus ridership report. And we should discuss the treasurer's requests for the budget.
Yep, and then I'm going to bring, we're gonna have a non-public about your, about your, tonight too, but about your administrators, I'm gonna bring their contracts, so that'll be on the next agenda.
Okay.
Alright. I'm gonna have information on how. Will I bring homeschool numbers?
Yeah, just checking into homeschool, that's just budget.
I'm gonna take calendar discussion off for now?
Yep.
Did you use your card?
I mean, just add to the public line, yeah.
Ridership?
Yep.
And then we're gonna try to get your payout information, and then the treasurer request. And then I'll include your budget committee calendar in there, just so you have it again. And we're gonna price out this one. Alright. Could you also just put on the upcoming meetings, the SRO public hearing, which is Thursday, the 29th, at 6:30?
6:30?
That's what I have on my phone.
That's good, no, I, I was guessing 6:00, so.
That's 11:29. Thursday, the 29th?
Of November.
November.
Okay, I was gonna say.
Yep, I got it, thank you.
I was right, I wrote it down there.
Alright.
So in the, and that's in the cafeteria.
That's where it's posted, I believe.
Yeah.
What's that?
That's where it's posted for.
Alright, upcoming meetings, we have a joint board meeting next Monday, October 22nd. Next regular board meeting is November 1st, and then on November 15th. November 26th is our next, our joint board meeting for November. Is there any closing public comment?
Hey, we tried to set a date for a work session to go over the budget before.
Oh, yeah, you're right, we should do that.
Wood nights are good for you guys, Tuesday's not bad, is, is bad, remember. This Monday.
So what about next Thursday? Oh, Amy's up here.
Amy's up.
I have a meeting that night.
It's for budget, right? Is there anything wasted?
Budget. On the 24th?
The Wednesday? You won't have any SEU representation here, they'll be in strappers.
It might be okay.
I'll move away and they're in strappers. It's fine.
Yeah.
And you're gonna get maybe a post on that one.
Yeah, this'll be mostly just us kind of talking priorities, I guess. And we'll, we'll keep note, anything we decide, we'll keep notes on, and send it to you, you know?
We're not making any decisions on it, we're just gonna go over it.
Right.
A little more thoroughly than we were able to do tonight.
We may be short on some information, and still be able, we'll bring it up in the next meeting.
Okay. So if, we have some minor changes to do tonight, you want us to do those and get you a new? Doctor, you just wanna wait? We had a dollars.
Yeah, no, that's.
I don't think anything we changed.
We didn't do any big change tonight.
We'll let you use what you have tonight.
We got the same notes that we had taken anyway, basically.
So you guys wanna try next week, next Wednesday then?
Yep.
Get the dates.
I mean, we can come in anytime we want, so, I mean, it could be earlier, or it couldn't, or later, or.
Yep.
I don't know, or no, you guys can't make it till.
I'm, I'm good after 5:00.
Wednesday, I can be, I can be here at 5:00.
5:00, Wednesday 5:00? I'm Wednesday 5:00.
5:00.
10:24, right? Wait a minute, I don't have a calendar.
10:24, we're gonna have a.
I don't put it in here, it doesn't have.
Wednesday at 5:00.
Now.
Somebody send me an email.
Are we gonna have a work session or a special meeting?
Work session. What's the difference?
You could post a work session, if you post it as a special meeting, you could have A, budget development, and B, other. And then you can vote, if you need to. If I'm not gonna be here, I prefer the work session.
We're making suggestions, and then once we get them together, and they may change anyway.
Right, we're not, we're not gonna be making.
What about Shane, just somebody notify Shane, I guess.
I got a posting tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
At 5:00. Thank you, well, that sounds okay.
So, sorry, back to closing public comment. Any board member have any closing public comment? Okay, we do have need for a non-public session under RSA 91-A colon 3 to 2C.
And L.
And L. Do we have a motion to go into non-public?
I'll make a motion going non-public.
Second. We will roll call in, Mr. Winslow?
Yes.